The regular meeting of the Mishawaka Common Council for November 4th, 2020 will please come to order. This evening, we will once again be operating under some altered procedures consistent with the various executive orders that have been issued by Governor Hokum, including the wearing of masks here in the chamber as people are able to do, and we appreciate everybody's cooperation with that. Tonight, it appears that we have the chance to have more visitors to our meeting than we've had in recent memory, so we may need to ask for some cooperation in order to keep with the occupancy limitations of the chambers, to ask some people to move in and out. So we appreciate your indulgence as we try to make that all work and still allow people the opportunity to participate in this public meeting. With regard to those who will be participating remotely, members of the public will be asked to place their microphone on mute during the meeting with the exception of any public hearing. At the appropriate point in the public hearing, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting any comments that they wish to make, one person at a time. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record, and then after completing their comment, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute. Thank you, one and all, for your cooperation. And with that, we will move into the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence in memory of the more than 238,000 Americans who have lost their lives as a result of COVID-19.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Hazen?
Here.
Mr. Mammalenti?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Here.
Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of October 19th, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then the minutes will stand approved as received from the clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorials.
Yes, Mr. President, we have an appeal from, to the Board of Public Works and Safe -- I don't even know where I'm at tonight, I'm sorry. To the Board of Zoning Appeals in the Mishawaka Common Council, this is an appeal, a use variance to maintain a duplex in an R1 single-family residential at 509 East Lawrence Street. This appeal is signed by Darlene Ballard. Appeal number 2020-51 to the Common Council and the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is a appeal for conditional use for sand mining at 1032 East 12th Street, and this is signed by John Cookett. Edition number 2020-21 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council, this is a petition to rezone, to rezone from C1 District to C10 District to allow convenience store with gas pumps part of 2754 Lincoln Way East, existing parking area for Mishawaka Inn. This is signed by Smita Patel. Petition number 2020-22 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council, this is a petition to rezone, rezone from C1 District to R1 District for residential use, 2316 Lincoln Way West. This is signed by John Palmer. Edition number 2020-23 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council, this is a petition to rezone from C7 to R1 District to C7 and R1 District to C10 District to allow a convenience store with gas pumps. This one is signed by petitioner's attorney, Peter Agostino.
Thank you. This evening, we have no report of any special committee, so we'll move into ordinances on first reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-39, an ordinance of the City of Mishawaka authorizing the issuance of waterworks revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of certain additions, extensions, and improvements to the municipal waterworks of said city, providing for the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of said bonds, other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds, and repealing ordinances inconsistent therewith.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-39 will be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-40, an ordinance adopting revised rates and charges for water services furnished by the City of Mishawaka's municipal water utility.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-40 will also be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-41, an ordinance of the City of Mishawaka authorizing the issuance of electric utility revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to apply on the cost of the construction of certain additions, extensions, and improvements to the municipal electric utility of said city, and improvements to building space for the utility, providing for the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of said bonds, other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds, and repealing ordinances inconsistent therewith.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-41 will be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-42, an ordinance establishing a schedule of rates and charges for electric energy and services rendered by the Mishawaka Utilities Electric Department.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-42 will also be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee. This evening, we have no resolutions, so we'll move into ordinances on second reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-37, an ordinance declaring an emergency and transferring and reappropriating funds within the budget adopted for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2020. This is to transfer funds in the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund in the amount of $10,000.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter, proposed ordinance number 2020-38, report that they have examined said matter and that, in their opinion, it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire council, and we move forward acceptance.
Emmons, is the chance that that was assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee?
No, this was signed by the land use, this is 37, wasn't it?
Then it should have been Budget and Finance Committee.
I have it.
Well, I'm glad, I read wrong one, I'm sorry.
No problem. Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. I mean, it's ditto, it's such a different number.
Ditto works for me, if you want to go with that.
I mean, it is, it's
Second.
Thank you.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This is the second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance 2020-37. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Good evening, Mr. Ryan.
Good evening. My name is Tim Ryan, I'm the Director of Central Services for the City of Mishawaka. I would ask for the council's favorable vote in this. This will bring our uniform rental lines back up to get us through the end of the year. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ryan? Much as I'd like to come up with a couple, I don't have any either, so.
Ah.
We're all taken care of then. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward. Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed Is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
What question?
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes 920. Proposed ordinance number 2020-38, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a PUD amendment to allow an elevated water storage system tank not to exceed 150 feet in height.
Thank you, ma'am, we have the committee report, please.
You want it again? Why not? Okay. To the members of the council, to the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter, proposed ordinance number 2020-38, report that they have examined said matter and that, in their opinion, it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move forward.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This is the second reading in public hearing on proposed ordinance number 2020-38. Anyone wishing to speak in favor is going to be let off by Mr. Prince. Good evening, Mr. Prince.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the council and friends of the city planner. Tonight, I'm also presenting as the president of the Mishawaka Utilities Board. So in representing Mishawaka Utilities Water Division this evening, we are requesting that the city Northwell Field Plant Unit Development be amended to allow for the construction of an elevated water tank not to exceed 150 feet in height. Together with me this evening is Dave Majewski, the manager of Mishawaka Utilities Water Division, Jamie Pochekai, who is the design engineer and project manager for our consulting firm, DLZ, and Andy Lombares, who is a vice president at DLZ and overall a very good guy.
I am asking Mr. Ryan, our friend, to go
To go and fetch them, because they're
Fetch them from the hall.
They're not earning their keep tonight, is what you're saying. So the planning commission considered this request on October 13th. There was no remonstrance at that public hearing. The planning commission passed on a unanimous recommendation for this request. To start off the presentation this evening, the planning that led to this request goes actually back to 2015, when the city completed our last water needs assessment. At that time, we made the decision to look for a replacement wellfield site to replace the current Gumwood Road wellfield. As you're aware, the city has since acquired property east, including the Judy Creek Golf Course, where a new wellfield is planned and where we hope to start construction next year. The Gumwood wellfield was proposed to be closed because of the small size of the property, the high magnesium content in the water, and most importantly, the water production capacity did not meet the needs of the projected long-term growth of the city. The wellfield itself was recently annexed to the city in 2015, and at the time, it contained 23 and 1/2 acres. At the time of the annexation, the range of uses in addition to the wellfield use were approved for the wellfield site. These included both residential and commercial uses. At that time, a desire was expressed by the adjacent subdivision in the county that no internal connection be made to the property. As such, the wellfield was essentially zoned as an extension of the Grandview Plant Unit Development, understanding that similar uses and shared access points with Grandview would actually be developed over time. As part of the planning associated with the creation of the new city wellfield, Mishawaka Utilities also looked at other system-wide deficiencies. The reason for the new tower is twofold. As the city has grown, there's a greater demand for water. The current tower located north of the Indiana Toll Road, just east of Drake Road, is 1 million gallons. The proposed tower is 1.5 million gallons. Pressure is the other reason. The elevation of the current tank by virtue of its location and constructed height is not tall enough to create as much pressure as is needed for the city. The new tower will raise the average pressure by approximately 15 PSI across the pressure district, while also providing more storage and greater ability for fire protection. The proposed tank is intended to replace the existing water tank by the toll road, and as part of the design process, our consultant engineer reviewed the potential of keeping the existing tank and adding a new location. He also looked at varying options for new locations. Because of the need to increase pressure, the existing tank did not work because of the lower-than-desired pressure. From a cost perspective, the replacement was deemed the best alternative. In regards to identifying a new tower site, we asked DLZ to look at multiple sites, including at the intersection of Capitol and the Indiana Toll Road. It was determined that the location further to the east would not effectively address the pressure deficiencies in our existing system and would also require a significant amount of new large pipe infrastructure installed. The proposed location here at Gumwood Wellfield addressed both the existing pressure deficiencies but also added the benefit of minimizing the need for installing new underground piping since it was already in place as part of the wellfield. Once the desired site was chosen, we looked specifically at the placement of the tower on the site. The area needed for the tank is only 250 by 250 feet, just under an acre and 1/2. This is significantly less than roughly 18 acres that is currently owned by the city. As you may recall, the city sold the southern 5.75 acres of the original site to Great Lakes Capital as part of the development of the Grandview. Unlike other development, there was no real traffic generated or developing concerns to be addressed, other than what it looks like is a large object in the landscape. As such, significant care was taken to locate it in the area that was furthest away from existing development. Although we inherently do not feel the water tower is a negative impact on the landscape, we do understand that from the appearance standpoint, it changes the area. As such, the proposed location is on the far southeast corner of the wellfield. This places the tower site 400 feet from the single-family home properties that brought the existing Gumwood wellfield to the west. It also places the site 135 feet from the parking area that is located to the west of the recently completed Grandview mixed-use building where Bar Louie is located. We felt that this location was ideal and would allow for the new development to be constructed around the perimeter of the tower, where the new tower can actually be integrated into the area as it develops over time. If approved, we hope to start construction in the spring of 2021. If this happens, we would estimate that it would take two construction seasons to build that new tank and to have it online by late 2022. Lastly, before I conclude, as part of our advertising and sending out notices, we did receive a few questions that I want to state here for the record the answers to. First, we were asked if the tower and proposed construction would have any impact on the private wells that are located in the adjacent single-family subdivision to the west. The answer to that is no, the tower will not have any effect on the private wells. The wells on the site where the new tower will be constructed will be abandoned and sealed after the completion of our new wellfield. Once our new Judy Creek wellfield is online, we will not be pulling any water out of the existing Gumwood wellfield. The new wellfield, for reference, is located over a mile away from the site, and thus will have no impact on the existing wells. Secondly, we were asked if the tower would affect property values. Opinions, the answer to this is the opinions on what impacts property values are subjective, but we do not believe so. Again, we've asked DLZ to position the proposed tower to maximize the distance from existing single-family homes on the wellfield property. Once the city wellfield and property is redeveloped, we believe there will also be development between the adjacent subdivision and the proposed tower, which will inherently provide separation or buffer between the instances. For reference, the city has an existing water tower on the East 3rd Street in the city. This is just to the west of the intersection of Bittersweet and Lincoln Way. That tower site is located approximately 50 feet from multiple single-family residence properties in that location. We've also had discussions with Great Lakes Capital, who develops and owns the Grandview Development that are adjacent to the proposed tower site to the east. We have worked with them to make sure the proposed tower site is not just utilitarian, but it can be amenity. The walk has been shown on the plans that goes around the perimeter of the fenced enclosure that we anticipate could be used by apartment residents. The Great Lakes property is obviously much closer to the proposed tower, and they have not expressed any concerns. At 150 feet in height, the tower will be visible from far away, just like the other water towers operated by the city, and we feel that the tower will fit in the landscape as appropriately as a landmark. That concludes my presentation. Again, we have the technical folks here to answer any questions that you might have. Please take advantage of that if you would. Thank you. Are there any questions from Mr. Prince? Compton?
Mr. Prince, non-technical.
Okay.
Remember when we talked about this property and sold the property to Great Lakes Capital? Part of the wellfield decided that it was more valuable to us to
I forget the number, but we received over a million dollars for that.
Yeah, so now we're going to take this last piece. We talked about then, if I remember correctly, that we thought that that would have high value at some point, and we're going to kind of take that off the market and put a water tank, which I don't oppose, but I'm just questioning you as to, is that the best location? Or would it be better to find another place? And that could be nice tax-producing development.
So any place that we put the water tower is going to remove that tax
Understood, but this is kind of, you know.
Right, and it's in the middle of the area, and I think what we were sensitive to is that the infrastructure that's already in place really provides value to the city in terms of not building the additional piping because the wellfield is already there. So we think that financial benefit outweighs looking at moving it to another property where we would have to potentially buy additional property and then count on selling this property. And keep in mind that this is only 1 and 1/2 acres of the remaining 18 acres. Significant portion of the existing wellfield does have the intention to be redeveloped and sold in the future. So we're taking a small portion off of the market, but it's an area that we would need to do in any location, so we feel that this is as good a location as any.
Things as they are in society today, big security around a water storage tank would be, in, something we would be highly concerned about. Is that being, maybe that's more of a technical thing, but is that part of the process now? Protecting the water supply.
So we definitively, it's an issue. You've noticed, it's in the county, we don't allow razor coil in the city, but the tank on the south side of Ireland Trail, the recently completed tank, actually referred to as Mabel's, has razor coil around it, but that is in such an isolated location, we think there's actually benefit to have development around the tower because it has eyes on it. Typically, problems happen when we don't have eyes on it, people can go back there. The other thing you'll notice from the drawings that were in the staff report is the security fencing, it's an ornamental fencing proposed, but having worked on a number of detention facilities in my previous life, the anti-climb curved security fencing is some of the best security fencing that you can provide, and particularly when I was working on the Pendleton Juvenile Correctional Facility, they wanted to use that fencing instead of putting razor coil on top of the fence. So we think from a security perspective, you also can't cut that fencing, typical chain link fencing, you can come up and wire cutters and get relatively easy. We feel that this will be stronger from that perspective. Also, the Water Division, I believe, installs video cameras on all these locations so we can keep track. The other thing is, I'm sure the access or your ability to get in and up is also through a locked and secured area. So I think there's multiple protections in mind, but perhaps Mr. Majewski can better address that? Or not?
That's good, I'm just a concern, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Any other questions for Mr. Prince? Sir, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Say no one. Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward. Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak against the proposed ordinance? I'm sorry. Are there any council members who wish to speak?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. I thought we were going to have a presentation from the engineer or somebody else as well, so I do have a question.
Oh, certainly. If the technical experts would like to come forward, we may have some questions for you. And thank you again for your cooperation as we're trying to balance out the occupancy of the chambers. Appreciate it.
I'm Jamie Pochekai, I'm with DLZ, address is 2311 East Jefferson Boulevard.
I'm afraid that we're having trouble hearing you, so thank you.
There we go. Jamie Pochekai, DLZ, Indiana, address is 2211 East Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana. The question, which is posed, is the look. So yes, Ken's passing out the profile view of the tank. This is a composite style tank. The design is meant to mimic what you have at Blair Hills Tower location on the south side of town. So more, more style, concrete-based, feelable. Reason I was asking is because I was looking at the picture of the one on Bittersweet, and that's not very pretty. You know, pretty old-fashioned style, and I think I would probably not like having that in my backyard, so this is quite a bit more attractive, I mean, as far as water tanks, so it's more attractive than the tank on Bittersweet, so I appreciate the picture.
Gentlemen, anything you'd like to add? Please.
Dave Majewski, 10577 Apple Tree, Reno, CO, Indiana, Water Division Manager. When the Gumwood tank was built, it was a car lot in the mall out there, that was pretty much it. Now, we have three hospitals, multiple residential cancer center, DA hospital, et cetera. So that growth just keeps expanding, and this will not only help us out there, but we'll be able to utilize this treatment plant and, or this tower, be able to pressurize the future growth up there. So it's very, very important, and we appreciate your support, thank you.
Any questions from the council? Not so much a question, but a comment. I appreciate the work that you and Mr. Prince and our friends from DLZ have done, not just to address the needs of city, but also to be sensitive to the wants and needs of the surrounding homeowners. So thank for the work that went in.
Thank you very much, councilmen, they have done a great job, Mr. Prince and DLZ, and I appreciate their efforts as well. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council? If not, then I will call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes, yes.
Mr.?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Your ordinance passes 920?
Thank you. We'll now move into privilege of the floor. At this time, members of the public are invited to the podium to speak or to speak remotely with respect to non-agenda items only under privilege of the floor. Anyone interested in speaking, if you would, please come forward to the podium. Is there anyone then who is participating remotely who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? Thank you. We will then move into unfinished business, and if I can prevail upon the good graces of my friend, Mr. Ball, to step out on the hallway and let the folks, if there are any others who want to participate in the next item on the agenda, to let them know that we've reached that point. We have reached the 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 point. Let, let, let the record show that the department heads almost trampled the crowd in their pace to exit the chambers. It was the out that they were looking for. Thank you, gentlemen. And folks, thank you for your cooperation as we're trying to balance out. Madam Clerk, good math skills. Thank you.
Proposed ordinance number two thousand twenty dash twenty-four and ordinance amending chapter one thirty-seven of the municipal code of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of nineteen sixty-six of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a PUD amendment to allow for mixed-use develop, development, to allow residential, commercial, and industrial uses vacant land south of the Stula Road and west of Cedar Road.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President, to the members of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, your committee on land and planning approved the matter, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-four. Report that they have examined said matter and that in their opinion should be presented to the council as a whole. This is signed by the entire committee and I move for its acceptance.
For a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will then move into the second reading of public hearing of proposal number twenty twenty dash twenty-four. Mr. Dan.
Thank you. Good evening. Mike Danz from Dan's Harners Associates, sixteen forty-three Commerce Drive, here in South, I should say, in South Bend. Um, and I'm just here to help counsel as far as represent what's going on with this particular petition, kind of give you a history of what's happened up to this particular point. There has been some additional changes that I will go over with counsel this evening as well on the site plan. I did send to the W, uh, the copy of the, uh, preliminary site plan. Hopefully counsel has that along with the apartment complex. Good. I just want to make sure of that. Um, so mainly what we're asking to do, this is the, uh, Beto PUD that's located on the Stula. It actually has from, it's like on the Stula, Cedar Road and Lincoln Way East. This was done back in the nineteen seventies. There was an overall development plan that was done. It was actually approved by, uh, Mishawaka City Council back in the seventies. So it is still a valid PUD. Um, over time though, what has happened is is that there's been several parcels of ground that have been developed. And for, uh, Ken Prince and some, uh, other of the plan directors, basically as site plans had come in, there was, uh, concern or issues that it was decided that anything that happens within this PUD, if there are major changes, it should actually come back before the public hearing procedure. They ask for an amendment and to have that new use approved either through council and through the plan commission. So that's mainly why we're here, uh, to kind of work with Ken Prince and the planning department and proceed and ask for amended PUD. When this part of the project and, and the big portion of this project was the apartment complex. When it was originally done, they had just submitted a amended PUD just for the apartment complex. And there had been a preliminary site plan for that apartment complex. Uh, through different issues, whether they had gone and met with the neighborhood and actually addressed concerns and things of that nature. That didn't happen. That particular plan was pulled before it ever got to council for a, uh, hearing and a final decision on that. Uh, myself and Jeff Johnson, uh, were then, uh, asked to take over the project and see if we could go ahead and proceed and get this approved with that particular use and also with the, the rest of the property in mind. We met with Ken Prince on that issue. It was decided that just from the standpoint of this particular, uh, amended PUD, it made more sense just to bring in the rest of the property. And there's about fifty-six acres of ground that hadn't been developed as of a point in time. Ken suggested that instead of just trying to work and get the, uh, apartment complex approved, bring the whole thing in. What that would end up doing then is is amending the entire thing, bringing it up to date till today. And it would also nail down the uses, not only for the proposed apartment complex, but for the rest of the PUD. That would at least give assurances to the residents in the area that are adjacent to the property, some consistency and s- at least some satisfaction of what could happen on this property. The original PUD had a lot of uses to it. It had multifamily. It had densities up to fifteen units per acre. That were fronting right on the Stula Road. And whether the adjacent residents knew about that particular project and whether that had been approved or not in the PUD, that's not necessarily here or there, but it was an issue. Everyone just saw that empty farm property across the street and just assumed that it was always going to end up being that way or somehow there was going to be single family development, even though there's a mixture of uses out in this area from apartment complex to the Martin supermarket to an industrial user. So there, there's a wide range of uses that were out there. So what we did as we worked with Ken Prince, the result of that is this preliminary site plan that's for you this evening. We had also met with the residents on a couple of occasions, um, to try to address their concerns and at least see what they had issues with from the standpoint of the apartment complex, because that seemed to be the big issue. But then the second factor was how the rest of the property was going to end up being developed and whether those remaining parcels of ground could also have some concerns for their single family development on the north side of the Stula Road. We, again, worked with Ken, uh, to come up with that. What we tried to end up doing was to narrow down those particular uses that would be allowed on the rest of the property. We submitted a plan with an apartment complex that was on that. We did talk to the residents. There were still some major issues with the residents. Several of the residents did not want any apartment complex. They would prefer just to have their ground remain as it is or only have single family development, which from a planning standpoint doesn't make the full amount of sense because there is an existing apartment complex and higher density commercial uses to the, the west and to the south. And we also have an industrial user. So from a planning standpoint, and along with the higher density you have across the street, it made more sense that the apartment complex would fit there from a, a compatible land use standpoint. The planning staff, uh, was in favor of what we were, uh, posing for this particular use. Uh, after we had met with the residents and coming forward and time looked quickly on this, they thought that the original twenty acres was extending too far to the east and too close to the existing single family homes that are on the north side of the Stula Road. Uh, there was a concept given to us that said, why don't you try changing the apartment complex from more of a rectangular shape to an L shape, push more of the buildings to the south, have adjacent to the industrial area, which is right to the south of the property. Uh, lessen your frontage on the Stula Road and keep your entranceway farther away from the single family development. That particular plan is what you see on this preliminary site plan. So in essence, what's happened is we shifted everything over. We increased the width of the property along the industrial common boundary to do that. Um, that driveway opening is now closer to, um, Bittersweet Road. Also what has happened is that the, the buildings were pushed farther back. So there's actually no building running on the Stula Road. The closest building on this particular plan is over six hundred and seventy feet from the closest single family property that's on the Stula Road. So what we tried to do was mitigate what the impression was from the residents over there that this apartment complex could have an impact on their property value. So mainly everything was pushed farther south and farther to the west. Uh, we had gone through a public hearing also, plan commission. We had, uh, uh, the plan commission take a look at everything. Uh, Chris Jamros, city engineer, looked at this from a traffic standpoint. She was fine with, uh, the issues that we had done, the way we had developed the site. Uh, the residents had mentioned that there's a lot of traffic on the Stula Road. As part of the, what was required for the commercial development, Chris was requiring a de-acceleration lane and a passing blister. Also as part of what was being required for the apartment complex was a sidewalk along the entire frontage for the, the property, because there were some issues with the residents saying that there is not an existing sidewalk along this portion of the Stula Road and that there are people that go out and walk along these particular areas. So that was part of this particular development and that's also part of the requirement. One of the other issues that had come up was a secondary access point. Um, and what we were required to do and what's reflected on the plan that council sees is that there is a emergency access point to the existing apartment complex to west of this particular property. The contingent purchaser, Mike, uh, is here also this evening. He'll be speaking right after I finish, so council could certainly ask him questions. But he'll go over the development, the type of buildings that are going to go in here. So we did provide that secondary access point over to, uh, that apartment complex. What this development also does, because there was concern from residents that they didn't want all the traffic dumping out onto the Stula Road, was that at the southeastern end of the apartment complex, there's an additional, uh, secondary access point there that goes to the east into what we call parcel C. Parcel C is parcel that is going to have commercial, um, uses to it and maybe some industrial uses. And it made sense to have that tie-in point over to that portion. So when that roadway gets developed, there will be that secondary access point that will, um, basically split the traffic out so it doesn't all go out through the Stula Road. And again, Chris Jamros did not have any issues with traffic on the Stula. It was envisioned that the way that this particular development was going to end up being done, that if someone was going to be either working in Elkhart on South Bend or Mishawaka, most likely what you would end up doing is coming onto the Stula Road, get to the lights either at the Stula and Bittersweet and south on Bittersweet down to Lincoln Way, where you would be at another signalized intersection. And then most likely you would go east to get to Elkhart, uh, go west into Mishawaka or to the city of South Bend. Uh, cause from a planning standpoint and from a traffic standpoint, you obviously want to get traffic to wherever traffic signals are because that moves traffic most efficiently. Um, there's less of a chance that someone is going to go east on the Stula Road, up to Cedar Road and then down Cedar to get to Lincoln Way where there is no traffic signal. That from that standpoint, the road's not the same. It makes more sense to go to the Stula because the, the additional lanes of traffic are there. So that's how this particular one was developed. Um, the other portion of what happens is, is that they were committed to doing architectural standards for the apartment complex that meet the C1 standards for commercial zoning. So that's a higher standard for apartment buildings and the contingent purchaser will go over the architectural. He actually has some, uh, pictures of what they've done, uh, on other developments so that he can explain that proportion to council. Um, the issues with drainage obviously are all going to be handled on-site. Uh, there, there's not going to be any water issues from our property to adjacent properties. The way that this lays out is, is that the lower portion of the property is actually toward the Stula Road. So that's kind of why you see those retention areas there. But also as part of what we do in working with Chris Jamros, for any safety issues is, is that we also put firming there between where the Stula Road is and where the retention areas are for safety reasons. So that anybody driving down the Stula Road wouldn't drive off the road to the, one of the retention areas. There'll also be additional landscaping along the Stula Road and along our eastern, um, borders. Again, that provides screening between our apartment complex and any of the single family development on the north side of the Stula Road. Uh, one of the last things that has occurred within just about the last forty-eight hours is that we were asked to take a look at what you see as parcel B on the, uh, the preliminary site plan. That's the parcel, it contains seventeen point four acres plus or minus. That's the, the main contention that some of the residents had. They weren't sure of what would happen there. Um, what we were willing to do and commit to, um, this evening is, is that the eastern portion of that parcel B, approximately eight to nine acres, with the part that's closest to any single family development would only have single family development and no other uses would be allowed on that. So that's the only type of development there. The western portion of that seventeen acres that butts up against the apartment complex would strictly just be for uses that are allowed under the R1 category, which is the most restricted category for the city of Mishawaka for residential development. So that's what we would do there. Um, an issue that, uh, had come up, at least what I had heard, um, is, is that where we were showing an access road through the property through parcel B that connected down to parcel C that would potentially put a street between the Stula Road down to Lincoln Way. There was an issue that they thought that maybe that traffic that would come up through Lincoln Way, get up to the Stula Road, cause some issues on the Stula Road and in which way they went. We would commit that there would actually be no access between parcel B and parcel C or A. So then in essence, parcel B would only have access to the Stula Road. You have the low intensity uses. There would not be a road or any kind of connection point between parcel B to parcel C. So hopefully from a resident standpoint, that would take that concern away, that they're not sure of what's happening on C and where the traffic would somehow be funneled between C up to B and then out to the Stula Road. Um, the main parts that we had asked for, hopefully this gives some insurance policies to the residents there that they now know that that very northeastern portion, that eight or nine acres is only going to be for single family development. If somebody wants to do something different than that, then they would have to come back for this procedure and do an amended PUD and ask both the plan commission for their recommendation and then come to council for a final approval for that. So that no high intensity could happen on that parcel B that, that is located along the Stula Road. Hopefully that, that gives protection to the residents. They now know from a point forward in time what would actually be on, on that property. And that if somebody did try to change that, they would have to go through a public hearing procedure in order to have that changed through. Um, what I would want to do next is have Mike come up and go ahead and introduce himself to council so that he can explain exactly what he envisions for that apartment complex for a maximum hundred and eighty-eight units that, that we've got. And he can explain what he has done in northwest Indiana at other developments that he's done there, where they've actually done mixed use residential, where they've done apartments and single family right next to each other. And I'll, I'll let Mike explain that unless council has a question for me.
And, um, thank you. Um, tell me about, you mentioned that there are going to be, with the term you used, berms, mounds?
Yeah.
Next to the ponds. Tell me about those. I, I, I'm concerned about ponds being, as we develop future property, we've had some issues and I, I don't like seeing something that close to the road and giving us the possibility of a driver in. So tell me something that'll help me with that.
Usually when, when we design those, I, I, obviously we're with Chris, we're like closely on those. Usually the, the mounding would end up being either a four to one slope, which starts outside the right of way. Gentle slope that goes up, but basically what they're also going to end up doing is putting landscape trees on top of that. So you would have evergreen trees either in single or double rows that are there along with shrubbery. Because what that also does is that, like you were saying, if you have a vehicle that's coming through there and somehow got off the road of that, you have something to stop that vehicle before it ever even got to the crest of where that mound is and on the other side where that retention area is. So, and that's something that Chris would look at closely just to make sure, uh, of that impact. Because I, I've seen some of the issues in Mishawaka and the way some of the retention basins were done. They didn't have anything really between the street right of way and where the start of the retention basin.
Thank you, and I thank Chris for thinking of that. We appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Compton?
Maemelanti. Mr. President, thank Mr. Dan for getting the thorough, uh, explanation and brief history of the project. I just kind of wanted to, um, piggyback on what Mr. Compton had mentioned. Um, before his comment or question, I was going to ask, one, how deep are those? What do you anticipate them?
Probably, uh, and again, whether we're the civil engineers or they hire someone else, usually what we would end up doing is the, it's going to be based on the capacity of this. My guess is, is that, uh, one, it's going to probably be four to five feet. Usually you also have to make a determination that when you're looking at a pond like this, whether that would be the full size, because what we always try to do when we're developing retention areas is, is that for the capacity of the drainage, um, you want that to drain down so that when you have that rain event, in this particular case, Mishawaka uses about a five inch, five point six inch rainfall for a twenty-four hour period, that the water would go in. But in this particular case, this area has very sandy soils. Um, that they would have more of an issue trying to keep water in these than what you would think. Um, because of the sand that's here, it's going to percolate through and infiltrate into that sand, uh, relatively quickly. So my guess is that those would probably be no more than four to five feet deep. Um, and if it's, if it's that. And usually what you also try to do and what you can see on this particular plan, what you end you end up doing is creating watershed areas within any kind of development, whether it's this multifamily development or commercial development. And based on how the topography is, you try to separate out your retention areas so that you don't have one large one at one spot unless it's obviously isolated on the site somewhere. So you place maybe several across the property so they don't have to be as deep or as large.
Okay, and regarding the berm's, I was pleasantly pleased to hear that you're going to install those. Would those, pardon my ignorance for missing this, if you had mentioned it, will those be only along the Stula?
They would end up, depending on how they were doing, they could be on the Stula and then also come along that eastern portion because usually you may want some kind of separation between where you'd have more of the higher-density multifamily to the single-family development.
I guess the reason that I asked that, that obviously you can't put a berm over the, along the entrance and block the entrance.
No.
But there would still be an access.
Yeah, usually you taper the berm's down, then you either add more landscaping, like you're saying, at the entrance ways, is usually what you would end up doing. In this particular case, they would also, because of the way, and again, this is a preliminary site plan, but you would most likely wrap that berm around that east portion of the site plan where you see that on there up at that northeast corner and bring that along there. There's been a mention to make sure that we do have screening between our eastern boundary and anything to that east.
Would be very difficult, if not impossible, for a vehicle that is traveling east or west, get into the pond.
Yes.
Whether it's through the small little curb cut entrance.
Yeah, and usually if it's just that curb cut entrance, again, you're going to have some landscaping in there. And usually, remember what we're also doing here is that you're having the acceleration lane. So you have your travel lane for cars going east on the Stula Road, but then you're going to have an additional probably 12 to 15 foot that is that dedicated de-acceleration lane, what we call basically a turning lane. So if I'm headed east on the Stula Road, I'm going to go into that de-acceleration lane and then turn into the site. The travel lane is actually even farther away from where those retention basins are and where that berming. You have an additional lane there where traffic is actually slowing down to make that turn into the project.
Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Dance. This is Volker.
Thank you. I just had a question about the sidewalks. So I was at the presentation a couple of years, whatever that was, and I see the sidewalks on the drawing that we have here extending, you know, through your parcel A but not along the remainder of parcel B. Is it your intention or the owner's intention to extend that sidewalk at this time all along Cedar Road?
It won't be all along parcel D because they're only purchasing that. Parcel A, they'll be required to do that. But as part of the approval of the PUD, when the next piece gets developed where there is single-family development on those portions that I've talked about for that 17.44 acres, there'll be a requirement to extend that sidewalk.
So, so just to clarify real quick, I'm sorry, my mind went blank for a second. So parcel that's being purchased right now is only parcel A?
Yeah, A, yeah.
Okay. So how can you guarantee what's going to happen on parcels B and C?
Well, because that's what we make the amended PUD for. What you're actually doing is you're approving what you're requiring. So council is putting conditions on this amended PUD. So what we are saying is when that development comes in, whoever goes in there and puts that in, that will be a requirement. Also, what will end up most likely being a requirement is that if there's the driveway that comes in for whether it's a single-family development on that parcel B that we're talking about that's far this northeast portion, Chris will most likely require the acceleration lane there as well. So she takes a look at that, but that will be a requirement on this PUD that that's what's required to do. So no matter who does that development, they will be required to put that sidewalk in place. They'll be required to put the acceleration lanes in place. Those are the issues that you're dealing with and that's why we're doing this development. We're trying to give residents that insurance policy and because we're actually creating the zoning that we're doing here, we're putting those conditions on. And then that way it's enforceable.
Well, it's not weird. It's not you that's putting those conditions on. It's the council that's putting those conditions on. And frankly, it's the first time that I, I didn't understand that these conditions are being put on pieces of property that have not been purchased or are not being purchased. So I think that that's, I, that, I understand the neighbor's concerns and it all sounds great, but then does it make it difficult to sell these other pieces of property because the restrictions are so specific to them? Does that make sense to anybody?
Do you want me to answer that question?
Sure.
In Mitchell Walker, when you're doing development, uh, single-family development along roadways, there's a requirement with sidewalks. I mean, that's-
Well, I'm not even referring just to sidewalks. I'm just referring in general as an example. I'm sorry I interrupted you.
No, that's okay.
But I was thinking, and I did it again. I'm thinking about though, like the connector road between parcels B and C. I mean, that's really puts a lot of very specific restrictions on this property and I wonder if it would make it more difficult for the family to sell the rest.
No, the, just so you understand, what we're doing is making those as conditions and we're asking council to approve it with those conditions.
I understand.
The owners understand and have asked us to make that part of the condition for approval of the amended PUD. And just to go back over that road, just so everything is clear, that road is not going to go in.
I understand.
So make sure. But no, that's, they're agreeing to that. So that they understand that if you decide to buy the property or John Smith or whoever wanted to go in there and do the development, residential development, they understand that that's part of the property. And they take that into account when they do their cost analysis, what they decide to sell property for and what they're going to build.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Dance, for your explanation. Looking at that 17.4 acres, as you move along the Stula and we're looking at, at some future date, that certainly will be developed, are we saying that we're only going to be, the development will be restricted to single-family units along the Stula?
On that, yes, on that. So that's 17.44 acres. What we're saying is is on that eastern portion of it, the eight or nine acres, basically just take half of it.
Right.
That portion can only be single-family development. That's it. They can't do anything else but single-family development. If they want to come for you, that's fine, but we're saying this amended PUD limits the use on that portion of the property down the single-family development.
So someone, someone living on the other side of the Stula looking to the 17.44 acres, the only thing that they would see would be single-family units.
Yep, on that, yep, on that eastern portion and then remember on that western portion, the other eight acres, it's just only uses that are allowed under R1, which is again single-family development, like senior cottages, assisted living care, but that's limited only to that western portion.
And that's what's facing, well, actually-
That's where that, more of that, Rookato, where you have the higher density right across the street. You don't have any of the single-family. But that's what we tried to do. I'm trying to hopefully address any of the concerns that the residents, that we're having the single-family homes, they would only be looking at single-family homes.
Thank you. Thank you. Ramalante.
Thank you, sir, for the additional question. Just brought up a point of mine here. So the east facing the Stula, it'd be single-family home. On the west side facing the Stula could be the R1.
It is R1, which is again, it's the most restrictive portion of your ordinance that you have. And that's single-family development. It could be townhomes, things like that, but still, it's, it's overall under that residential.
And it, does it make sense to have the entire Stula frontage of parcel B be all single-family?
It's a question that if that's an issue with council, we could certainly look at that. And if you, you know, if I had, if you have that issue, we certainly could try to make that the point if you just want that all to be single-family. I'm not sure if that's, if that's the gauge from council.
It was just a kind of a question here that I-
What I tried to do was at least create on that western portion because you're buffering it up against the multifamily where the apartment complex is. You have the higher density of Rookato across the street where you've got the townhomes, the duplexes, the quad units that are there, that potentially you might have senior cottages on that portion that's budding up right against the apartment complex that's proposed. And if you were going to do a church or an assisted care facility or something like that, but that's where that would be located at. As compared to just single-family development. Doesn't mean that you can't do single-family development. Developer could come in and buy that entire 17.44 acres, be single-family development. There would be nothing to stop that from happening. And that would be great if it could occur.
Mr. Dance, I was under the impression after our last meeting here with the meeting room, in that you guys were going to go back and try to figure out how to do another exit. And that was really the only issue that I thought we had to resolve. I thought we understood that we were going to do owner-occupied villas and townhouses to the west and then residential R1 to the east.
Yeah, and so probably two things there. So actually, one of what we're doing there is actually doing more restrictions on the portion that you're talking about, which is that very eastern portion. So instead of just doing R1 there, we're saying you can only do single-family development there. That's it. If we were doing R1 there, that potentially would do what I'm talking about between the single-family to the apartment complex. It would allow for an assisted living care facility or a nursing home or a church or something like that, which I believe would have been some concerns to the residents that they didn't want that directly across from their single-family development. So that's why I'm actually saying specifically that that eastern eight to nine acres is only single-family development. That's it. And what you're saying is on that western portion, that's where we're talking about R1. That's where we would keep that at. On the, the second issue that you were talking about was the secondary access point for this development. We are doing that emergency access, but I'll let Mike explain from his standpoint about that secondary access point that he's proposing to do for that future road that would go down there at that southeast corner, at least so that you understand his logic and how they came up with that. But, but we would still, no matter what, have to have that emergency access point to the west because we're required to do that. So that would still go in no matter what. And he can probably explain exactly what he envisions for that particular access point so that you could ask him questions on that.
I think there's some confusion with the neighbors and myself included that when you said owner-occupied villas and townhouses and then I get something late that says nursing homes and churches and that.
Yeah. That's why I tried to take that out of there so that it's only on that eastern portion. So that, again, we were trying to give the residents that insurance policy that all they would ever see from, across the streets from their houses would be single-family homes.
I understand that and I appreciate it, but I think what we were all expecting was to come back with the whole parcel B being, you know-
And again, if that's an issue, then I need to know that. And we either address that at the rebuttal stage and so that we can answer that question because I definitely want to understand all the concerns that you have.
I guess we can look at it and speak.
And public influence for that, that's the other portion.
Thank you, Mr. Hazen. Other questions for Mr. Dance?
I do have a couple. First of all, I want to thank you and the development team and you and Mr. Johnson in particular for the work that you've put in on this to try to listen to some concerns and make some adjustments. And I can see that reflected in the layout for the apartment complex proper and particularly with the clarification of the pond issues in response to Mr. Compton and Mr. Ramalante's questions. That looks pretty good to me. I do have some concerns, you know, piggybacking a little bit on Councilman Hazen's comments about parcel B. So, and if he's confused, I'm confused too because, you know, it wasn't my anticipation that we were going to see a reference to nursing home uses and church uses either when this came back before us. I understand. We'll defer on that issue to a certain extent until we hear from the neighbors, but I do have a couple of follow-up questions. First and foremost, since I come at things from a different perspective to you, when you talk about the distinction between the eight to nine acres on the eastern portion of parcel B and then the remaining portion.
Yeah.
While on what I'm looking at, you know, I'll acknowledge that maybe this road doesn't, when the final site plan is done, match up exactly to where it's going to be. Just for reference purposes, can you help me orient, you know, when I think about eight to nine acres or when you speak about eight to nine acres on the eastern portion, roughly where would that approximate to the end of the road that's there?
If you, if you take a look where, basically, if, that's what you're taking about, if you take a look at the eastern portion of the apartment complex on the L, the very eastern portion, if you took that line, yeah, if you took that line straight up, that would be the line of demarcation between what we'll call the eastern portion of parcel B and the western portion of parcel B. Because that, that kind of makes a common sense point where you would have a split like that.
That was very helpful. Thank you. That's what I was struggling for. Then with regard to the western portion of parcel B, would you agree with me that if tonight this is approved with only single-family residential uses and single-family or residential uses only? Although it would require some additional steps and some time and, you know, the trouble of having to come before us again, if in fact that there was a desire to amend it in the future to allow for nursing home, church uses, whatever would be appropriate in a PUD, that would be a step that the law would anticipate, our ordinances would anticipate that a developer could take if in fact they wanted to add those uses into the mix later rather than-
And, and we'd be willing to agree to that. Because I understand the ordinance too and it's like if there's a use there that still falls under the R1 category, that let them come back to you and ask for amended PUD so that you can judge whether that particular use would fit on that portion of that property. Now, we'd be willing to do that. If that's the issue that council has, we'd be willing to do the, the single-family for parcel B. That just clarifies everything.
Well, I'm like Councilman Hazen. I'd like to hear from the neighbors and hear from others. And eventually I'm going to have a question for our legal counsel with regard to, as much as we've worked with you and respect your integrity, I worry that the enforceability of the commitment that you're making with regard to only single-family on the eastern portion of parcel B and another use on the more western portion, since that's not embedded in the ordinance that we'd be passing this evening, we'd have to rely on the group of representations that are made in the record and it's not embedded in the ordinance. And perhaps I'm gun-shy and we're a little gun-shy, but we've run into some issues on projects that don't involve you and you haven't been involved in, where representations that have been made to us in recent memory have not been fulfilled by the end user of the property. And the last thing we want to do is have to chase somebody down and ask them to keep the commitments that they've made to us when they stand in.
No. So what would end up happening is, is that that's what council wants. Then mainly what would occur is that parcel B would just be amended to say single-family. That's it, straightforward. And that would be part of the ordinance. And council would just approve that amendment to the PUD request. And it says parcel B can only be single-family development. And then that just makes it straightforward. It's clear on the record of what's going on. Then that would, from the issues that we're talking about, if somebody wanted to do something other than single-family development, come before this council and, and request a change for an amendment.
Thank you. Appreciate your patience with me, Aziz.
No problem.
Any other questions for Mr. Dance?
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Doing well? How are you? Thank you. Thank you.
My name's Mike Sackich. I'm one of the principals of In Good Company. My partner, John Hicks, is with me this evening. Uh, we're also the owners of Reflections Apartments, which is adjacent to the site. We bought it thirteen years ago, I believe. Converted it from a section forty-two low income property to a conventional. Um, so we've worked with the city before and while we were, you know, rehabbing it and upgrading it and converting it. So we do have, uh, some track record with you folks. So we're here to, uh, propose a hundred and eighty-eight apartment units in twenty-four buildings. Uh, buildings are seven or eight units in size. Uh, the seven unit building has three car garage in the building. Um, the balance of the garages will be detached parking. So I believe we'll have close to a one for one garage ratio, uh, on the site. Uh, the unit mix will consist of one, two and three bedroom units ranging from eight hundred to thirteen hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, rents would be, uh, eight or eleven hundred to two thousand dollars a month based on floor plan and timing. Um, we propose a five thousand square foot clubhouse, pool, full fitness center, uh, dog park, um. We, uh, we currently have the sister, uh, property completed in, uh, Burns Harbor, which is Dunland, Indiana, near Chesterton. It's a hundred and eighty-one units. We've done here pictures of the existing. We propose to, uh, do a little bit more luxurious uh, version of this by adding brick on the front elevations. Feel like a wrestling match, Rick? Then there's some building pictures. Um, so we propose to add, uh, uh, brick on approximately fifty percent of the face of the elevations. And these buildings, most of them are designed that there is no real back. The back looks like the front, the front looks like the back. And that's in, that's by design to give it a more residential feel compared to maybe some of the other communities that are in town. This particular, uh, development is called Traditions. It's in a single family subdivision of which we are part of the homeowners association. So, uh, the synergy to some degree is we were asked to build this in this community to complement. It's, it's designed to be a traditional neighborhood development. Um, so they wanted us to build this to complement the single family in this particular case. So it exists, it's something somebody could touch, feel, see. Um, you, we do participate both in the financial part of the homeowners associations as well as voting. Um, so that's unique to us. We have four other new developments or new construction that we have. This is the one that we actually, uh, are a part of a single family subdivision. So, um, and it, it works really well. We, we allow them to use the fitness center, the clubhouse. I think they do once or twice a month. The homeowners will do like a Sunday night dinner or something. So, um, yeah, we think this is probably going to be a couple of year project when it's, by the time it's complete as far as construction is concerned. Um, we, with approval, we would like to get started, you know, in the spring and maximize, you know, efficiency and weather, you know, like so. That's the summary.
Anything else you want to share with us?
All right, that's the overview. And we, um, I don't know who was here. We were here two and a half years ago with the exact same thing, just, you know, different site plans. So we've worked with the landowner and the homeowners and, you know, along the way to try to get to this point.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Brennicky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, my question goes with the building of it. Are you two going to build them yourselves or what's the labor market? Are you going to use local people? They're going to be, uh, compensated well benefits or what kind of, uh, program do you have?
We have a builder that we'll contract with that's built all over the state of Indiana. Um, we plan to go local because our, the developments we've done are at least an hour away. So it's to try to get existing trades to, and they're all local to the areas that we built. So yes, it would be a preference for all sorts of, you know, business reasons. Um, legally, they won't be working for us, but we're so hands on that even though I'm paying somebody to build it, I'm on site almost every day. Uh, because we're, we self-manage. So everything that we do is us and we have a hundred percent control, both of the management, the construction. You know, it's our property.
So will, will they be ten ninety-nine employees? I mean, how, I mean-
Contractor.
They'll be working for the contractor themselves?
They'll hire plumbers, you know, uh, concrete, excavator, all the trades.
We just want to make-
We'll have, yeah.
That the taxes are paid the way they're supposed to be and, you know, sometimes you hire a guy and you ten ninety-nine him and he doesn't pay his taxes like he's supposed to and that, that affects everybody.
Yeah. Now, we're, we're, we decided that we, we could. We have built in-house. That's kind of what it would be. Uh, but at this point in our careers, the, the time to run a construction company between the two of us is this is, we have a really good, uh, developer who's only done multifamily in Indiana. So it's a special, specialized building. And then he knows, knows the industry, knows the business.
From, thanks, Mr. President. Looking over your unit, it says you have seven units, seven eight units. Are they one bedroom, two bedroom? What's, what's the breakdown?
There are three different building types that just, all it does is change the mix per building. So, uh, some are ones and twos, some are, some are twos and threes. And then I don't think there's a third building type. I don't, Jeff, I don't think the third building type has ones, twos and threes in it. Um, but it's in order to get the proper mix.
So you're saying some units, there's some one unit, some two unit, maybe some three bed?
Yeah, yeah.
And this is just for clarity, someplace you mentioned you have a hundred and eighty-eight unit. You have listed here a hundred and eighty-five.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a whole error.
I just, for clarification.
Yeah, it's, and that, I mean, the actual number that, when we cite planets, really just layout driven. You know, it's, we're not ceremonial on whether it's a hundred and eighty-five or a hundred and eighty-eight or a hundred and eighty-
I know, it just says that most people have it on a hundred and eighty-eight.
Yeah. But as a developer and that somebody who manages their own stuff, um, most of our stuff, even if we purchase it, is lower in density. So, uh, we own thirty communities around the state. Reflections is a hundred and sixteen units. We tend to buy or build under two hundred because of, uh, the control. The less units, the, the less people, um, the easier it is to manage. The less issues you have, the less people living together. So that's a business philosophy of ours by, by design. As opposed to, you know, you know, the four, five, eight hundred, thousand unit communities. We would never do that.
And you're all rental.
Correct.
This is over.
Thank you. I have a question. Things have changed in our area since you were here, was it twenty fifteen?
I want to say seventeen, but-
Seventeen. Um, anyway, there are a lot more apartments available in our community as a whole now as than there were, you know, several years ago. And you're checking getting started next spring, a year of construction probably.
A couple of years, probably.
Couple of years. So do you feel that there's enough of a market? Or, I mean, I, can you tell me a little bit about, you know, our, um, apartment market here in this area? And why you feel that putting apartments here when there's so many is a good idea?
Yes, um, so my background is I was a co-founding broker for C B R E's multi housing group in Chicago. And parlayed that into northern Indiana. So I actually created the database for apartment communities throughout northern Indiana back in the day. Before we, I went private doing this. So that was my expertise. I sold large apartment communities. My job was to know every asset, know all the owners. They usually came to me for data on supply and demand. So that's an expertise that I just happened to have early in my career. Uh, we've owned in north, only north, well, down Indianapolis, but our, we're from Chesterton, Miraville. Um, we know northern Indiana probably better than anybody because we've managed in it and we complement my brokerage background of northern Indiana. Um, people who do appraisals in the past and get market data from, used to be from me. And my friends are still in the business. So I get my market data plus our hands-on experience. We manage all this stuff. You know, so we're at Reflections at least, you know, twice a month. So, um, and then to answer your question on why we want to do this project, this, this project, um, we believe there are a hundred and eighty-eight, uh, families or people who want to live in this part of town compared to the mall and where everything else is being built. Um, and high school is attractive, uh, to us. Um, we're contrarian by nature. So we, the, the simple answer is we said we own a hundred and sixteen units, which is kind of small. Um, and we said we could add, you know, another property that would complement Reflections at a higher rent level. So we're at about a thousand, but it's older and the units are smaller. Um, today's renter market is rented by choice as opposed to by necessity. So we feel there's a, a hundred and eighty-eight credit worthy, uh, people who would love to live in this location, um, as opposed to where the density and the traffic is. Um, and the property was already P U D'd for multi housing. And, uh, I shared it with the homeowners. My manager said, you know, we run pull there and a few years ago, can you build me some more units? And I kind of laughed. I go, I wish I could. She goes, well, you know, the land's for sale next door. So I said, really? I never go east because I have no reason to go east from the property. And I pulled up, looked at the sign, called the broker and that's how we got here. Real life type stuff.
So can I, I'll follow up question to that then. So what are the rents? So the, the apartment complex next door was a lower income housing complex. You purchased it and now you're at market rate for lack of a better term?
Yeah, it was government subsidized tax credit deal. And which means the incentives were to put low income people in it. And those, that fifteen year compliance period expired when we bought it. And we thought the location and the real estate was worthy of converting it to conventional. And we've done that through conventional. Uh, we did a, a property called Retreat in Elkhart identical-
I thought you did something in Elkhart.
Yeah, we have four locations in Elkhart. Um, so we converted that, uh, from low income at the end of its compliance period. And, and we have, you know, everything's brand new.
So my question though is, so the rents, I think you said were going to be a thousand or eleven hundred to two thousand is what you're thinking in this. What are the rents in the complex next door?
We're closing in at a thousand.
Just, are they all the same?
There's a hundred, hundred two bedrooms or fifteen three? That's the other thing, we don't have any one bedrooms. So, and they're smaller. Now, the two bedrooms are eight hundred and fifty square feet, which for us is small. But there's a need for every type, just a question of how many, right? If there's only a hundred and sixteen units there, if I had four hundred units that small, I would probably- Yeah, it's meant to capture, capture the higher end of the demographic or luxury for people who rent by choice.
Mm-hmm.
Um, our most recent community is like three thousand dollar rents adjacent to where we live in Chesterton. It's called Eagle Crossing. And, um, there's seventeen different floor plans there. We're adjacent to Sand Creek, which has six figure and seven figure homes in it. Literally can look at the property. Uh, my friends, our friends live there, families live there. So, you know, we kind of wearing all the hats, both your side of the fence as well as our side of the fence. I believe, uh, our town manager wrote a letter about us as community partners and folks. He saw it.
I don't, we saw it.
So even when we purchased, we started out going to building department and the police station. We've developed a community relationship. And that's what we did with Reflection. We went, we knew what we were buying and we asked, you know, please, what was going on there from their perspective. So we knew what we were walking into. And then we went to the building department and told them we were going to rehab the entire property and convert it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Mr. Ramalinde?
Thank you, Mr. President. Not necessarily a question, but, uh, just more of a comment regarding the Reflections apartment complex. Um, for years, about ten years of hosting neighborhood watch meetings in the area. Reflections, you speak of prior to the conversion was always, uh, a topic of discussion. The activity, unwanted activity there. I just want to compliment you since the, uh, the rehab and the upgrade, the calls of service. A statement from the police department. Thank you.
Because it's us and it's our money and we run it. I mean, we want, we literally want to save things, you know, and we're unique that way. Um, we're not going to sell the place in five, ten, fifteen years. You know, most likely our children will end up with, you know, the new stuff. So, and we've only sold two properties in our history so far. For different reasons. You know, we still own almost everything we've purchased or built.
Any questions? If I can follow up on Ramalinde's question with regard to security. That also was an issue that was brought up in one of the meetings with neighbors that, uh, I was able to, to duck into. So other than that initial relationship that you try to strike up with the police department when you come to town, other than the physical presence that you and those who work for you have on site, what else that you, do you do as an owner to try to ensure that there wouldn't be any spillage of a security related issue out into surrounding neighborhoods?
Um, we don't have a security officer or a courtesy officer at Reflections doing it. So we have, um, our manager handles it, but we prefer to have at least one courtesy officer at every location, at every demographic. And for the most part, we do, I don't know today why we don't have one at Reflections. And that's discounted rents, uh, to have a local police officer. It could be a sheriff, could be a sherlock, it could be a state trooper. We don't, we don't care. Um, but we don't make them either. So that's a deterrent as well as they tend to handle, you know, loud music or anything that happens, uh, that kind of stuff. So that would, that is a, would be a request if you want to share with the police department. For Reflections, we would do the same, um, at the new property. Uh, currently we are adding, uh, company wide at every location because we want to be ahead of the curve. Uh, the high tech security cameras in the common areas on light poles. But we've done it in a few communities. It's not terribly expensive to put them in the key traffic areas, but they're a deterrent. Um, just like single family homes that are open. People come from other places, believe it or not, to apartment communities to do the same mischief. So, um, property's good, but people, they see, they might visit, they might, but I don't know how, I'm not a criminal, but, um, yeah, we're, we're, we're very serious about that. Plus, anything that happens, I take Reflections, uh, at the tail end of the rehabs, we got a call from our manager on a dumpster fire and we evicted that person immediately. Um, so we make the decision to handle that stuff directly with the manager. I don't know if you're familiar- My, uh, I don't know if you're familiar, but, um, we're lucky enough that in our industry, uh, the laws are written in the landlord's favor, which means we have more control uh, on our criteria, how we manage, we just have to treat everybody equally. Conversely, to, you know, states like Illinois or California, which maybe you know or don't know, but, uh, that's one of the things we love about, since we're hands-on and our families live in the, you know, you're not a good neighbor and you're causing issues with the help of the legal system, the police officers, we, again, we want the same things you do because if you have one bad apple in a building, the rest of them over time, if unaddressed, will move out. So in Indiana, you can create community, um, because the laws allow us to set the criteria.
So if I were a resident of the neighborhood and I had gone through these meetings, heard the various presentations that you've made, including this evening about the things that you're going to do to be a good neighbor, um, even if I liked what I heard, one of my concerns would be that as soon as this is approved and it's built, you're going to be there two times a month. You're going to be over in the region. If I have a problem and I got to try to figure out who the manager is, who I call, you know, I may not be able to find you. So what, what type of outreach do you do with your current facilities to try to facilitate that communication between the surrounding neighborhood and yourselves? So that, that you're the one who's saying, you know, in, in essence, what I take you to, to mean, and tell me if I'm wrong, is that the buck stops with you and your partner. So, if that's the case, how do the people who want the buck to stop with you track you down to let them know what's on their mind?
I've already handed them those, so I met that wanted my business card, have it, and has my cellphone on it, my personal residence address.
Okay.
Um, we walk the walk, which is, you know, it's not a sales pitch, Bert, it's just how we do things. Um, everything I've shared with you can be proven, I've offered, uh, they can, you can go to the properties, whether it's a traffic issue, everything that is a concern to anybody in this room and beyond already exists with us. So, uh, Bernie in Chesterton, that was not a sales job. They, and I fact, I think we're the only ones that are, can build in Chesterton, um, because of the way we manage and we're community guys. So, you know, that's not a sales pitch, it's real. And if you were to try to prove it out in Valparaiso and Burns Harbor where this is built, or Eagle Crossing in Chesterton, or the enclave, the newer developments, or the existing developments that we bought and taken up a level or two, that's our reputation. Um, anybody can have my cellphone number, and that's, I run everything in my life off that one cellphone number. We also have a portal on our website. Like, look, obviously, in Indianapolis, we're not as prevalent as we are in our backyard, but people email us directly, that keeps us, uh, it's by design. If somebody has a conflict at the site level, and let's just say we have a bad manager or a bad employee, that that's what it's designed for. So they, they can, our manager supervisors are keeping things from us when we visit. And things are not going the way we want them to go, you can email me or John, and they do, and we find out the truth. We are that here, um.
Last question for me at least, um, you know, when I look at the site plan and the, and the photos and the renderings that you've showed us, it looks good, but sure you can understand from, you know, I think from my standpoint and I suspect from others, one of the things that's important to us when someone wants to come into the building, the community and build is, what type of investment are they making in the community? So at this point in time, have you done the calculation of what you anticipate your total investment would be if you're able to build this as you envisioned?
I think this, I, I have a, well, because we don't have full engineering and stuff, I don't have exact numbers, but I'm thinking thirty-five million dollars.
Thirty-five million? Thank you. Other questions? Alright, thank you, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Demet, I'm, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Um, so you'll have one hundred and eighty-eight units in this, in this development, and you will not have a site manager on?
Oh, yeah.
You will have a site?
Yeah, a hundred and eighty-eight will have, there'll be five employees full-time. Plus, uh, we have our regional manager, her name's Janina, she will oversee, she does oversee Reflections. And, uh, she's probably, the regional's onsite, which, uh, which is a lot for a regional manager, at least a couple days a week. We visit, and then we rotate, so, um, you know, between the two of us, we're probably out here once a week.
Okay.
Because we're, this is an easy, we're an hour away, which is an easy drive for us compared if we're in Fort Wayne, that's two hours each way, and Indianapolis is two and a half hours each way. But we still do it.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed, uh, ordinance? If you would, please come forward to the podium. Then I will ask, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? There are no one, then we will invite anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance. If you would, please come forward to the podium and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
John Perchini, uh, six-three-three Wendy Coke Court. I live in the neighborhood across the street, um. Um, I want to apologize because I'm going to be sarcastic, I'm going to get big mic here. Hope the way you treat, when you go through other places, don't do that to me. We've jacking with this for three years. No compromise, no bend. The only reason why we have got to this point is because we were forced to do it. Only reason why. Still fighting. And, you know, you know what, I think, I don't know why I say three years. Government, or what it is, but I'm glad we got to that point. I like the thirty-five million. I was one of the names that knew compromise was deep. Mike Dance, he talks a good story too, and I like Mike. He's seen this, they've all seen this, it's a whole mystery. I feel, this is all been in people's hands, they're lost. No big mystery here, right? Tony, Tony knows it. Okay, that's what we thought the neighbors could live with. Uh, not all of it, some of these neighbors don't want anything, and, and I respect them. But I try to be realistic about the residential development out there and what might make some sense. I'm in real estate too, by the way. Um, you got the PUD plan, as Mr. Hicksonball brought up and others. You know, if you want to bring a, a nice nursing home or an independent living, let's amend the PUD and take a look at it. You know, my proposal was kind of villas, townhomes, you know, in that first section of the one A, and then the single-family in the one B, or a mixture. But one A could be single-family, we wanted owner-occupied, not rentals. You know, and, and, and your proposal throws in rentals and everything like that. So, you know, that just didn't fly. If you want to bring it up later, then bring it up and let's look at it. That way we got a chance to take a look at the developments. Now, that doesn't pertain to that. He has done a much better job with the apartment, no question about it, much better. Uh, so that, the Lung family, I know, I think some are here, I'm disappointed in the Lung family. Murb Lung was a friend of mine, uh, he was welcomed into his community, got tax abatement to bring Patrick to Lincoln Way, and we're literally snubbing these neighbors forever. It's unbelievable. You know, for, just so, because we're worried about how much we're going to get for our land. And I had a disa- you know, I tried to reach out to Noah, uh, about a week and a half when this came up, and I told him I didn't think it was going to fly until these last, these last changes were at four-thirty. Yeah, that's how they operate. Noah gives me the lawsuit language, I get really tired. You know, we got lawyers and blah blah. You know, then sue, I don't know what else to do. I don't really have a threat with lawyers. You know, it's ridiculous, and I don't think the city deserves that. These people, it's only because of you and the neighbors, that's why we're here, or we'd be still battling this. So, I think we're at a point where close, so I don't want to sound like I'm totally against it, I think we're very close. And I don't think we're that far away from making this work, at least in most of the neighbors' opinions. And I think a lot of the neighbors can live with this because it's a fair compromise. But it's that zoning on Costula, you know, I don't, and Mike talked about cutting that drive up because I brought that up to him, so also, that just didn't make any sense to me, at least right now. Maybe somewhere down the road it does on parcel B on their plan. So I'm thinking that if we can get to, closer to this, which Tony and I and others thought we had until the last minute, again, you know, last week ago Friday, this pops up. Um, and then, then I talk to Mike and I talk to Noah, I didn't hear anything until Noah calls me today about four-thirty. So, that's the frustration of the neighbors, and that's the frustration that I have. I think it's, I don't think it's a bad drive, I do. Um, I think it probably can be of benefit eventually if it's built right and, and this, this transition's good. Um, two A and two B, not as concerned with that. My only concern was with two A, which you probably would agree with, is if you got industrial bugs up against residential, it might hurt potential development. That's why I kind of put some of those uses on two A and then two B with care. But I could live with that either way, I know it's not only my opinion, but that's just my thought from my experience. So I'm hoping that we can take a hard look at this. Uh, it gets the project in, and I, I want the council to know, these are two separate landowners and we have the users. The users has abided by what we asked, everybody's had, they've, they have done what, it, it's taken three years, but we got there. The landowners are not budging very much. You know, they're starting to budge, but, okay, we gave up the multi-family, you know, because I got to hear this lawsuit stuff all the time. I don't want to listen to that. You know, we're just, we're trying to work with the neighbors that live here and then asking for three years to get this done. We're tired of coming up here. I'm tired of it, I'm sure you guys are tired of it, this thing's getting old. It's wearing me out, I don't want to, I like to spend time with my family nights once in a while, and I'm getting tired of coming to the meeting over the same old thing because you won't compromise. So I'm asking you, please, to, uh, take a hard look at that, you guys have spent a lot of time. Thank you for it, because I know you've been dragged through this all the time too. So I think if we get close to this plan, uh, you know, I'm okay with it, so, um, that's all I got, I wish to get some questions.
Sorry, I'm running here. Any questions for Mr. Perchini?
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Perchini. Now, pardon my ignorance, but when you say we're getting close and they're fine with approving this, then I think the majority would be fine with it. When you speak that, are you talking about all parcel B being the entirety?
I, I thought, the kind of plan that I gave you that says one A and one B?
I must have grabbed the wrong pile.
Here's an extra. John, if you want to grab this? Thank you.
No.
No, I got the same one as they had.
Let's see what you got, John.
Yeah.
He doesn't want to talk me.
This is what, this is what we're really talking about.
What we provided initially, and that's how we got to that point with this apartment drawup. So that one A is the one that talks about, because we're trying to do a transitional type of thing and give it a little more high-density. And, and speaking of high-density, Tony and I, remember we talked about this, we backed off and even some of the, I don't think some of the neighbors loved it, told them, hey, do this, you can pick your density up, as long as you push it, you know, you push it away from the neighborhood, which I think they have done from the original proposal. Um, but here, we had one A, one B would be townhomes, villas, single-family, owner-occupied, and then, then basically what Mike provided was this single-family. So that's really the only choi- chant, uh, biggest change there. And then, if, like I said, if, since it is a PUD, then if they do come up with a bite on a nursing home or something, um, then, you know, bring it to town. And we get to get notified and take a look at it. Uh, some of Noah's argument was, uh, price per acre wasn't fitting for the, the Lung family, but, you know, and I told him, because I do a lot of land, I've sold residential land for forty-six thousand acres. I lost a deal, I told him this, eighty-five acres up, no city, no water, no sewer in the county, forty thousand an acre, eighty-five acres, and I lost the deal. We got outbid, so, you know, I don't want, you know, it, it, they're getting those prices, the days of twenty grand an acre for residential, that's ongoing. The demand is too heavy. And back to. Not so much what, he's kind of an expert, but he talked about choice, but there's a need. Sixty, seventy percent of people. That's over five hundred bucks. Or, the demand for apartments. Now, maybe not. Don't think we're, so, baby boomers, they, they lose, leave the choice market. I think the market's probably strong, too. And this neighborhood, it is desirable, it is away from all the, you know, the congestion and those type of things, so I'm sure it's probably going to work. Other questions?
Mr. Perchini, um, you, you know what Mr. Danch handed out, this is what he, and, um, so what you're suggesting is to cut up this entrance piece a little bit more, divide it up into A and B, one A and one B, that's what you're suggesting? But you can't live, you, 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 you don't want to see this, this wide here?
I'm alright with that, we're just saying, take this section, this house, make it townhome, villas, single-family, and then make this.
That's, okay, well, my, I, 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 I got you, I got you. And I'll tell you, my, 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 uh, my thought is, is following along with what I'm hearing here, and I'm prepared to make an amendment for this all to be single-family i- in the PUD. And if something else comes along, I think as you mentioned, a nursing home, whatever it might be, um, that we amend the PUD at that time with specific guidelines, that way we control what goes in there.
I think that, that.
To me, that makes the most sense.
Yeah, me too, rather than R1 because R1 is a single thing.
Because then, then, then it's open to whatever R1 is. And, and, um, I don't think the neighbors would like that, I would, I would want to, you know, it still leaves, if you read R1, it still leaves a few things that could turn in there that you may not want.
Right.
In the residential, even if you're even next to an apartment complex, frankly.
I agree.
Um, so, I'm glad that, yeah, yeah, I think with what Mr. Danch has drawn out, and I appreciate everybody trying to work together to get something, because I'd like to see this develop. Um, with this R1, glad you, I would support that, I'm glad you feel you would as well.
Yeah, I would.
Thank you, Mr. Compton, other questions for Mr. Perchini? Thank you for your help, my hope is that the next time that you come before us, we can just get you to come out of your shell and really tell us what you.
Just a little bit.
So, please work on that, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? If you would, please come forward and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michael Madsky, I live at fifty-three oh five Frieswood Drive, on the street from Mr. Perchini, Tom. Um, I'll, I'll start by saying this, fundamentally, I, from the beginning, uh, am against apartments on Costula. Um, I moved to the area about four and a half years ago with my family, and, uh, you know, looking all throughout the Penn district for the best home, and found this nice community nestled against this agricultural land. My wife grew up in the country, city utilities, Penn High School, Dundee, right? This, uh, this proposal, Mr. Danch tied up in a nice little bow for everybody. Uh, many of the things that I heard are surprising to me as of tonight, and I've been involved with this since the beginning. Um, and this is the first time that I can say that I'm not disgusted with what I'm hearing. So, um, you know, as written, I don't support this plan. Um, I have a couple of questions though, are the, are the verbal concessions that we discussed, uh, are those binding with respect to, uh, eliminating the road from B to A and B to C access? And, uh, looking to amend it to be all residential, single-family in SIP parcel B completely?
Take a stab at that, I may call on the combination of Prince and Mr. Purple. Take a stab at that and make call on the combination of Prince and Mr. Purple. What's in front of us this evening is the use of the land use issue. It's not the site plan to decide exactly where the curb couch ought to go in and where the road is going to be, although that's important to you and it's important to us. What we're here to decide is whether this existing P U D should be amended so that the use, whatever it's going to be, is made explicit and enforceable. So to answer your question, a- and again, I'll rely on the two gentlemen to tell me if I'm wrong, that was the question that I was asking or the dialogue that I engaged in with Mr. Dan, because although I trust him, I trust Mr. Johnson, everybody involved, we're all going to be, feel more comfortable if we have it embedded in the ordinance that's going to be passed and it has no hesitation with regard to what, we have no hesitation with regard, regard it's enforceable. So there is always a separate step to the process where the final site land, plan is drafted, it's taken to the plan commission for their approval, that doesn't come back to us. We approve just the land use itself. But again, I think I'm safe to speak for all of us that we like to know the answers to those questions as much as they can be known at this point in time, so we have the confidence that what's, we're going to approve is in fact in the best interest of the community included your favor. That's a long-winded answer to a simple question.
No, it's good.
I'm, I'm going to ask Mr. Purple, is there anything that you want to amend with regard to my answer?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Prince, would you like to chime in?
Oh, I will. President Kim, Prince, City Planner. The difference with this position is that it's a planned unit development. The planned unit developments are tied at least structurally to a site. So regarding the road connections, that point that was brought up, it should specifically be identified in the conditions. If it's not graphically shown, it should be verbally shown in your conditions or your motions.
Incorrect. But thank you, sir. I'm glad you're here. So as you can see, there is some enforceability to even the verbal commitments that are made by the developer.
Great. So, so that said, you know, again, on the written plan, I like the L shape. I think that's about the only material concession that was made on the plan that was submitted prior to this meeting, you know. But I will say that if we can come to the agreement that the rest of Vestula is single family zone with, following the, the normal city ordinance on, on potentially rezoning that in the future and whatnot. The only thing I hadn't heard mentioned was parcel C. I assume that that would be pretty much anything up to light industrial or whatnot, but I'm not as concerned about that, so I'll, you know, I'll, I'll stick with that. But I would say that, you know, again, based on the discussion, this is a plan that I can live with. I don't think it is a net positive for the community, but I think it is pretty well net neutral and I don't think it will, as, as verbally discussed, would negatively impact River Point Estates. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Evans?
Yeah. Okay, for clarification, you're saying you agree with the plan that Mr. Perchini presented to the council? Am I correct?
No, the one that Mr. Dan presented. But I guess they're the same, really. The, the single family along Vestula, parcel B.
On, on part B, all single family.
Eliminating the road between parcel B and the other parcels.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that, those are the main notes that I have. The other thing that I would like is I'd like to see sidewalk all the way along parcel B. I, I don't know if that makes it less easy to develop from a civil engineering standpoint if there's already sidewalk there and then they're trying to, to develop that land, but that would be a, a huge plus as well for the community.
Okay, because, okay, I understand part B, one B would be all residential, but then Mr. Perchini says one A would be townhouses, villas, owner occupied.
Yeah, no, I, I think Mr. Dan was talking about splitting it in half with eight or nine acres here and eight or nine acres there. I think that that is okay, but I think the better plan would be to state that that entire parcel would be single family. And I think that that certainly the community and the neighbors that I've spoken to would be much more.
Okay, so you're saying you want all seventeen point four four acres to be single family?
That's correct.
Any other questions, Mr. Evans?
No, that's fine. I just need a clarification.
Thank you. Any other questions for this gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? If you would, please come forward. Good evening.
And I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. I'd ask this council to exercise extreme caution, and the reason I say that is, how many times? How many times is the council going to be deceived by the developer and the seller? How many times are the neighbors of the community going to be deceived by the council or by that developer and seller? And what I mean by that real quickly is, two and a half years ago, all right, they tried to bring this to the council without even talking to the neighbors, and you said, no, you need to talk to them. And that's when we packed the fire station over at Wall Street. We had that whole entire room packed full of people opposed to this, and then they went to read the motion. Then they brought it back this summer, all right, and in a meeting, all right, Dale Woody here asked him, have you met with the neighbors in the community, all right, about your proposal? And he said, recommended we meet, all right? Well, that particular meeting, the developer didn't even show up, all right? You know that, you kind of scolded him for that. So the developer didn't even show up at a meeting to address the neighbor's concerns, except a representative, a non-principal, non-owner, non-whatever executive, right? So then, I, he, they set a meeting, all right, with us. I brought a petition, seventy-five people from our neighborhood and River Isles condominium adamantly opposed this whatsoever, right? Anthony was at the meeting, Maggie was at the meeting, Mike Dan was at the meeting, right? Noah Davy was at the meeting, all right? And, and so we discussed this, all right? And at that meeting, not on the part of developer, but as far as Mike and, and Noah Davy, David, Noah David tried a sad song about, oh, how much money we're losing because of concessions because we're going to make that all single family home there on Vestula. There was no confusion. All right, Maggie, Tony, you were at the meeting, Noah, you were at the meeting, Mike, you were at the meeting. There was no confusion because even in the parking lot when we were leaving, my neighbor, Pat asked me, so did they, did they agree to make that all single family? And I said, yeah, I believe so. He goes, all right. So we asked Maggie in the parking lot, she says, that's my understanding. There was no confusion, all right? Because they were crying how much money they were losing by making that single family, trying to like have concessions to us. So I'm going to ask you, all right, to exercise extreme caution because how many times? I mean, I, I'm like, you know, I'm tired of getting dragged in here too. I've spent more time in this room, all right? I should be paid for this. And it's ridiculous, right? We are concerned about the safety of our neighborhood. This is the biggest investment of our life, all right, other than our faith in our, our families is our homes, all right? And we're, we're concerned, right, with our children. We're a young neighborhood, all right? You know, a lot of us, I'm, was adamantly opposed to this, and I still am to a degree, apartment complex put there, all right? But we're, we're also making some concessions, trying to negotiate this. But every time we turn around, it's, oh, they dropped this at like 4:30 on last Friday, like a news drop bomb, all right, on a Friday night, you know, trying to bury it. We're going to have a meeting the day after the election, all right? You know, you didn't give us time to prepare. You didn't give us time to, to go, you know, to get together. And then I hear at the last minute, all right, today they're talking about something about a nursing home. Well, first of all, with that plan they passed around to you, we haven't seen, none of us in this neighborhood have seen that plan. The last plan we seen, all right, looked like this. And they were going to concede that whole area to single family homes. I, I, council members are shaking their head yes right now, if you're not looking down there, all right? So I, I ask you to extreme caution because we have been deceived and deceived and deceived and so are you. Try to take that little person, all right? Anyway, I am totally against, all right? If they don't make the rest of that whole parcel two B, single family homes, me and the seventy-five people I have on my petition sheet will fight this as much as we possibly can. Let me do my job. Sorry. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bell? Mr. Memelanti?
Thank you, Mr. Bell. So just to be clear, I apologize I couldn't attend that meeting, but the, my failing eyes couldn't see your, your phone screen. But from what I understand, parcel B that you showed was all single family is what we talked about this evening.
They left it vacant on the actual sheet they had, so they didn't really have it cut up and, and, and designated, but by verbal, all right, representation from not only Noah Davy, but Mike Dan, that they, yeah, that was not going to be something else.
So I'll ask the question, if parcel B in its entirety is amended as single family, you'd be able to swallow that?
Surely.
Questions?
Oh, Mr. Evans?
Okay. Parcel B, seventeen point four four, all single family. You made a statement that you could swallow it fairly. What do you, what, tell me what is your concern? Maybe I missed something. I know in the plan commission, I understood what you were saying and I voted for the community and I just want to know what your total feeling is, what you're objecting to.
Well, my opinion, all right, and feeling is that in today's market, I find it very difficult to believe that that whole acreage along Vestula couldn't find a, a buyer, all right, to develop into single family homes. I mean, that's would be most desirable, be single family homes all along Vestula frontage there, including the, their proposal with their apartment complex. I mean, so that's what the, the neighborhood, in fact, like I said, I have a, a document of seventy-five people that said they adamantly oppose any Vestula frontage for a multifamily.
Okay, so you, you're, you're saying you'd like A and B to be all single family?
Yeah.
If that marked that A.
Yeah.
And I, I, you know, I kind of understand, you know, my philosophy in Mitchell Walker, we're getting more and more apartments rentals and not owned, not condos owned by individuals and that, and that's transit. You can't build a community when you have transit people. And that, and it doesn't do your schools any good, it doesn't do your businesses any good if you get that traffic turnover and that. And I just feel we're being saturated and the more apartments that you have, the more problems you get there. That's my opinion. Now, maybe some other people don't agree with that, but that's my philosophy.
I agree with you completely.
And I just see them sprouting all over and I just don't understand how they're going to be sustained down the road. So I express that in the plan commission. So thank you for your clarification here.
Mrs. Volker?
So I just wanted to follow up on something that we talked about early on with the, with this site plan, so let's, don't worry about B right now, but A. You said that the seventy-five people that signed your document don't want any apartment frontage on Vestula.
That is correct.
And it's, it looks like to me with this plan that there wouldn't be any, any apartments with footage on Vestula. Is this something, does this make sense?
I understand what you're saying, but let's also be very clear. When you pull out of the entrance, our subdivision, you're now facing an empty field with what, forty acres or whatever, right? When you pull out of our driveway and out of our interest of our neighborhood, you're going to see this apartment. I don't care if the buildings are four or five hundred feet, you know, off the road and you put a berm, you're not going to obscure that apartment complex from our view, all right? You're just not going to, right? So let's not kid ourselves there. We're going to be staring at it for the rest of our lives until it move, which my wife has already said we should probably stop, all right? And get out of it. All right, because we don't want to see this area. We have a nice neighborhood there.
That you do understand, this is already zoned.
I know.
For apartment, so.
But, forgive me, if, forgive, I'm sorry. I apologize for the, just like I apologized earlier to somebody. If the existing zoning stood and had firm ground, legal ground, all right, today, what would we do?
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you mean.
The zoning that was passed back in the seventies, is that when it was passed, the original zoning for mu- for multifamily?
It's firm legal ground. It was an ordinance that was passed in the seventies. It's, it's legal.
Well, no, I didn't say it's not legal, but I mean, if they were able to develop this land without permission of the council, would they be doing it already?
If there was a buyer for it, then they would be doing it. But now you have a buyer for it that wants to do it with some changes.
Well.
And it seems to me, in all honesty, that the, listening to, you know, the conversation this evening, that there have been lots of concessions and changes from what we saw in 2017, and one of the biggest ones that I see is moving the entrance, really moving the entire apartment complex so that it's across from Bercato Shores instead of across from the house, from your neighborhood. So in all honesty, until somebody develops B and C, you're still going to see cornfields there, number one. And number two, if we go along the same lines that we've been talking about tonight, which would be to make sure that parcel B could only be single family, then what you would be seeing probably would be another entrance similar to this entering into a neighborhood of single family homes. So right now, you're in a situation where you have, and have exercised control, attempting to have control over what's going in here, and I, I just, in my opinion, people have really worked pretty hard to meet the needs and the wants of the community living across the street. While I understand meeting the economies of scale that I'm sure In Good Company wants by adding on to the number of apartments they have, I think that's what, part of what I was hearing today, and providing an upscale apartment complex, it's a step up from the reflections that you have currently there. So, so I guess back to my original question would be if, following on the single fam- if it's single family home in parcel B, which is what we could put into the ordinance specifically, you would be comfortable with that?
Reluctantly, yes. I, I, I don't favor it, but would I live with it? Yes. All right, as long as those preventative measures were put in place, right, that were legally binding, which, you know.
Which, which we as a legal body would want to make sure they were legally binding.
If I may, we also have made many concessions on our side, being the neighborhood as well too, right? Because a lot of us have gone from absolutely no to, you know, trying to compromise. I, I've been in this room more times than I care to count, all right, over the last couple of years, and especially this last year as well, right? So we've done the work, we put in the time.
Right, you guys have negotiated between the people that want to develop the property and the neighborhood across the street, across Vestula, there's been negotiation and a lot of work. And I guess that's what I was trying to say, is because of what, the work that you've done, these changes have been made in, you know, this negotiation process. And I hear people maybe saying that they don't agree, but anyway.
It wasn't easy.
Right.
I'll tell you that.
I'm sure it wasn't.
Over three years.
Right, right.
And twenty meetings.
And hopefully the meetings would be worth it, you know, if you get something to, to a point where, you know.
Any questions, Mrs. Volker?
I'm done.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for this gentleman? Sir, I just want to make sure, I guess for the record, I also was at that meeting that was here at City Hall. I just had to deck out early before I left and I, I was here and I, that's where I say when I'm, if Councilman Hazen and Councilwoman, Councilwoman DeMay are confused, that I'm confused because I heard things the same way that you did. I left with the same impression. With regard to what you showed us on your phone, that site plan, I'm even a little bit older than Councilman Memelanti and my eyesight is worse, so I didn't have a chance to be able to see this. Have you seen what was handed to us? My question is, is that reflective and I'll pass it to you if you'd like, is that reflective of what you have? So that's one, that's what you flashed at us when you showed us the plan?
Correct.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, just one. That, that diagram there, you say this is the first time you've seen this tonight? Or? No, I'm saying a lot of people in this.
Any other questions?
Mr. Volker?
Yes, just one. That, that diagram there, you say this is the first time you've seen this tonight?
No, I'm seeing a lot of people in this neighborhood.
Okay.
I, it kind of in the lead, all right, with council people and different people, right? Uh, so I'm getting information before anybody else. What I'm saying is that, that had not, with the one with the road, like, that they proposed earlier, people hadn't seen that. Right, that just came out last Friday. That was never really taken to our neighborhood for any type of consideration.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Good evening.
My name's Patrick Kramer. I live at six three nine Windy Cove Court, which puts me right in the middle between John Pericini and James Bell.
God bless you.
Which means no matter what I say right now, I'm screwed. And also my home for a different reason. Yeah, from the beginning, I was against the project. Uh, yes, I appreciate all the compromises. Uh, I think it's inevitable that something will go in as far as the apartment complex. And very concerned about what, what the use is for the rest of the property. I would be in agreement with the amendment that, uh, the seventeen point four four acres would be designated single family. And, um, that's my opinion.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Kramer? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Debbie Fox, and I live at five one one seven Breezewood Drive. And I'd like to just kind of echo what Woody said. Um, this summer, I've spent a lot of time looking at apartments in Mishawaka. And there are a lot of apartment complexes, and there are a lot of vacancies. So it's, I don't feel like we need another apartment complex in Mishawaka. Um, I'm looking to bring my parents back to Mishawaka. We finally found a villa, only because word of mouth that's, uh, somebody was an executor, so it never even went on the market. There is such a demand for villas and condos that you can't find any of those in Mishawaka. So I don't feel like we need another apartment complex, but we could use more villas and condos and, and single family homes.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Fox? Thank you, Debbie. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward.
Mr. Ball, thank, thank you for your assistance earlier.
Yeah, yeah, the door man.
We appreciate it.
Very good attempt. Thank you, I, my name's Tom McBall. I live at seven thirty-two Riverpoint Place. Um, and I respect, uh, the developers. I mean, I get it, they, they want to make money, I mean, who doesn't? Um, so if they feel that they can make money, make, building an apartment, I mean, yeah, I mean, build the apartment if you can. Uh, I, I, so I respect that. Um, in regards to Mr. Mamalani's comment about reflections when it was maybe government subsidized housing, and now it's not, I mean, I, I wouldn't certainly attribute, uh, attribute that to the developer. I mean, I, just in general layman's terms, I mean, subsidized housing is just that. And so if you get rid of subsidized housing, the rent goes up, and then therefore the clientele is going to be a little bit different. And so naturally, or almost naturally, the problems will cease or certainly go down.
But they could have not purchased. They could have remained.
Could have, yeah, yeah, but I, it could have, certainly. Um, so the, the, one of the biggest issues is traffic. Um, that's mentioned before, and I come out of, uh, Riverpoint Estates every day, at least once a day. And I'll tell you, it is getting harder and harder, and I'm just turning right. And it's hard, I mean, there's a lot of traffic on there because of all those, um, subdivisions for the down, uh, on Vestula. Um, and I do though, I mean, all the traffic doesn't go to Bittersweet and Vestula. I mean, I go east as well, uh, and other people go east. I mean, if you're going to Osceola, you're going to go east, and I mean, that, that happens. With the apartments, uh, a hundred and eighty-eight, so let's say now we're looking at maybe four hundred cars, give or take, uh, in that area. That's a considerable amount. And when they're leaving the apartment, even though there's a deceleration lane, to turn left, it's going to be a little bit more risky, uh, to get out of the apartment. So, and of course, turning left is a little bit more, uh, dangerous as well. I have another possible solution that hasn't been talked about before. Parcel A and Parcel C are virtually identical in size. How about moving the apartments to Parcel C? Then they could exit onto Tw- uh, McKinley, go towards South Bend, and then turn, or turn right on Bittersweet to go north. Now, I understand fully, uh, I'm not, I, I, I understand the point that if they have reflections with a hundred and eighteen, I mean, they would want them connected, I, I, I understand that, and maybe just have one site manager there. So I, I, I get that part, but that would be a compromise that I think the residents would fully, uh, support. Uh, and then there would might be, might be an exit on the Cedar Road as well. So you have an exit on Cedar, you have an exit on, uh, McKinley, I mean, uh, twenty, I mean, Lincoln Way. And so you can go toward Osceola, go to South Bend, Mishawaka, wherever. So tha- that's, uh, an- another, um, option. I know it's very late in the game, but, uh, listen, if we're, you know, willing to compromise and negotiate, I mean, there's something else that could possibly be on the table. So that's my two cents worth, and I appreciate your time. I know it's getting late, I don't know what time you guys are getting done here, but it's after nine.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ball?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, if you would, please come forward.
Uh, Linda Clements, I live at six two nine Misty Harbor Court in Riverpoint Estates. My question, I'm kind of, I'm very concerned about the traffic. Who owns Cedar Road? Is Cedar Road Osceola's road, or is that Mishawaka's road? Because it really isn't two lanes. If you're driving down there to, to go up to Lincoln Way off of Vestula, you have to really pull off to the side if another car's coming at you. So it's not very safe, and if that's where all those apartments are going to come out, and you're adding four hundred cars, that's going to be very concerning. And the traffic on Vestula has really picked up with all the single family homes that they've built in Osceola. And if, if all of those ho- homes are being sold, and there's so many of them there, why isn't this a good area to build single family homes? Why do we need apartments? Because I see apartments going up all over the place in Mishawaka, and I don't know where the people are coming from that are going to live in them. I don't, I don't know what the occupancy rate is, the new mills, mill, whatever.
Mill.
Is that all booked? The ones on, on Fur Road, right before the Toll Road, they're, they put on huge apartments there. I don't know if they're all full. And they're building them everywhere, and I don't even know what, if reflections, is it a hundred percent full? Sometimes it, it's not the nicest looking place to drive by. Um, I don't even know what Bercato, it's now called, they changed the name, whether, what the occupancy rate there is. I think they had signs out that they had places, and I'm just wondering, I don't want it to end up in this apartment complex, and it's empty, and it gets run down, and nobody's there. Um, I don't know why there can be single family or townhouses where their owner occupied instead of transient. I mean, that, that's, those are just my concerns about it. We've lived there for, we've lived in Riverpoint for thirty-four years. And the traffic has increased and increased. The, the speed, I mean, coming out of Riverpoint, you can get front-ended, rear-ended, the people that go tearing down there. Um, even lease cars that, and a lot of the policemen, I know there's a lot of them that live down on, off of those, uh, the new houses off of Vestula and Osceola, they don't drive thirty miles an hour. I mean, even the traffic across Bittersweet Bridge, and I'm just that area, and you add that many more cars, I'm just, I'm concerned. Because it's not, you know, a safe area to walk. I try to walk around there, but it's scary. So I, and I just don't know, I mean, those are my concerns, whether we really need more apartments. And why is, why are apartments more? Why do they want apartments more than single family home? I know this doesn't, these houses won't go to Mishawaka schools because it's Penn School District, but still, I, I don't, and I don't know the tax implications, you know? You make more money off of apartment taxes or single home. When he talks about the price of the houses, I mean, the rental at two thousand dollars a month, that's, that's kind of steep, I mean, you could buy a house. So I don't, I don't know. Those are really my questions, and it's hard to hear a lot of the questions going back because of the microphone.
Thank you. Are there any, any questions from the council? Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Good evening.
Four one Riverpoint Place. And I, I just want to ask the council to keep in mind a couple of things. Our neighborhood is a lovely neighborhood. People have been investing a lot in it. New roofs, new windows, new landscaping, it's been going on the last few years as younger people are moving in. And I, we'd like to protect that investment in every way we can. You may have noticed there's new signs. Uh, we chipped in to pay for those signs, and people volunteered to, to do the landscaping around them. So it's really very much a neighborhood project. Um, so keep in mind, as you're deciding what to do with this property, um, that, uh, we would like it to look as nice as possible to protect our investments. The second thing is, uh, what I often see when developments happen is that the existing infrastructure comes second. So perhaps we could think ahead, rather than waiting till four hundred cars are pouring out into this jula, um, to have that, the, the road widen, to have Cedar, I, and as Linda said, we don't know who owns, is it Osceola or Mishawaka? But it is definitely undeveloped road. And to have those things improved before we're pouring those four hundred cars and bicycles and kids and everything else onto those streets. And so please, uh, uh, first of all, consider only, um, single family homes in that B parcel. It seems like the A parcel is, um, a, a done deal. But, um, just to make sure that that is protected, that our, our investment is protected, and also the city. Because we trust you to take care of our safety. And so please, could you have the street department look at this? Have safety look at this before this development starts, rather than waiting until after. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? If you would, please come forward. See, no one, I will inquire, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to this proposed order?
Yes, can you guys hear me okay? Hello?
I heard. I heard something, but I.
Somebody said something.
Um, someone's trying to speak, if you could unmute your microphone? And perhaps increase your volume?
Are you guys able to hear me?
Now he's on.
Now he's on mute. Okay, why don't you try it now?
Okay, can you hear me now?
I already hear you.
I, I'm sorry, we're still having trouble hearing you. Let's do this, since we've been at this for a while. Um, in order to allow this individual to participate and try to work out the technological ends and give us all a break to be able to stretch our legs, since we've been sitting here for a while, you know, the, the chair would certainly entertain a motion to, um, adjourn for ten minutes to allow us to be able to work through technology and take care of other business. All right, we'll adjourn for ten minutes.
Recede.
Recede.
That doesn't mean you can go out. Yeah. Yeah. That's about where I need to be. So big dog.
Are you guys able to hear me now? Can you guys hear me okay? Is this a better direction? Can you hear me now? Hello, can you hear me? Well, it looks like we're stopping issues. Hmm, that's weird. If I talk up, is that possi-, I mean, does that help now, or, sorry, I'm just trying to figure out if I can make it work or not? Thank you. I appreciate your help.
So what I did was just-
Okay. Well, I didn't work with- I know, I don't do that anymore. Wait, I can't do it. Oh, yeah. No, I went home last night.
The rubbing alcohol and the, um-
Oh, sure.
Sanitizer.
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure, I, um, because I was on my feet all day. And I, uh, I, I got home, and I, first thing I did was take my shoes off, and I, I was surprised I was able to put shoes back on today.
How you been feeling?
Pretty good. I get that sound on the, oh, but I don't know whether one of them is real. My knee is, oh, yeah. It feels like a- I don't know. Four days. Four days though. If not, it feels like the knee is, oh, that's bad. I'll tell you, this is taking me long. Open my knee in the morning. And then an hour later, I go to the hospital. I'm in physical therapy for another four hours a day. What are you doing for that? All they got me on, exercise, equipment, walk.
Ring your bell. Get that, get that gavel.
All right. We are back on the record for, uh, our meeting. Thank you for everyone's indulgence while we, uh, tried to get organized here. Um, before we proceed any further, there is an individual who has attempted to try to participate technologically, and we're having some problems, um, making that happen. Although he has been able to converse with our IT staff the, uh, direct message. And my hope was that we were going to be able to have that person text me and ask their questions, or at least make their comments. But our record will reflect that as of this point in time, I have not received anything from that person. If that, if that comes in, then, uh, whomever is speaking at the time, I want to ask your indulgence, so if we even, we have to go out of order, that we can allow this person to be able to participate.
Are you guys able to hear me now? Oh, hello, can you hear me?
It may be. So what we'll do then is, we're, we're going, we're going to, we will continue to proceed under those wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance. And again, we are on the record with regard to proposed ordinance number twenty twenty, uh, dash twenty-four, the PUD amendment, uh, for the vacant land south of the Stula Road and west of Cedar Road. So, um, in light of the fact that we have an individual who wishes to, wishes to participate, who has contacted Mr. Mamalanti, I want to ask for Mr. Mamalanti's, um, uh, assistance to try to, uh, allow the individual to make, these are her comments. And, uh, please ask them to begin by getting, by stating their name and address for the record.
My name is Sean Carlton. I live at six twenty-one Bayview Drive. Are you able to hear me now?
She is on, she is on-
She is on the, on the phone.
Okay. Please.
Her comment that I had received was, "I have been listening full-time. I agree with my neighbor about the traffic concern. Before any new development is considered, infrastructure such as the Stula and Cedar needs work. Cedar is dangerous as it is now. Unfortunately, I'm able to, unable to voice my opposition remotely during the meeting." So she is caring for her pussy empathy. And that brings back my news, so I empathize.
Certainly.
Just wanted to make that for the record.
All right. Thank you. Um, as awkward as it may be, are there any questions from a council member or Ms. Yoon that we want Mr. Mamalanti to try to communicate to her? Mrs. Volker?
But, um, during the break, I did speak with Mr. Prince about Cedar Road. And Cedar Road up near the Stula is not a Mishawaka road. It would be a county road, I would guess.
Thank you for that clarification. That would have been my suspicion as well. Um, do we have anything else then for Ms. Yoon? So that we can wrap up her participation? Would Mr. Mamalanti just, you know, thank you for, for coming?
I will, and I also offer to-
Moving right along.
Mr. Pres-, Mr. President, it looks like you follow number three at the time.
I was going-
Have left the meeting.
Ah. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna inquire one more time nonetheless. Um, is there anyone else, uh, participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please unmute your microphone and begin by stating your name and address for the record. All right. Hearing no one, then, uh, we'll move into questions and comments from the council. Um, Mrs. Volker?
When you're ready. I have a question.
Please.
Um, one of the things that, uh, I think Mr. Danch talked about initially, and then we didn't hear about, is the connector road between the, um, existing apartment complex and the proposed apartment complex. And I was just wondering if there was anything that you could tell us about that? Who would be using that road? How the road was accessed? Would that keep traffic off of the Stula Road if people were using that road internally between the reflections and the new apartment complex? Is there anybody who would care to-
Mr. Danch, if you could come forward?
The, the way that we're showing the, the diagram, the traffic would not be going. So, what are you talking about coming out of the apartment complex? The, the way that diagram has a preliminary layout for it, there would either be-
Talking about this?
Oh, that one's to the new apartment. That, no, that's the, the connector road is down at the southeast. That dark green area was a emergency access.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Is that, is that something that you could use to, there would be traffic if there was UPS man or trash man?
Yeah.
Or anything like that?
That is more, um, favors, they really call them, uh, concrete favors. There, there's not an access street. It's just for emergency access. The fire department would know about where that location is. And they would be able to come in and access. They would probably use either fire hydrant or the, the, the apartment complex. And they would be able to come in there if, for some reason, the access point on the Stula Road was blocked.
No, or no?
No. The, the roads are anticipated going east from the apartment complex, either out to Cedar or down to- And those would be that, the future road that we had talked about. So basically, that's the amendment with the PUD. It shows how those access points would be done. So when that development occurs, those would be going.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Volker. Um, any other questions for Mr. Danch? We have him up here. Nice try, again. It appears that are none, so I apologize. Can you turn around and come back? All right, Mrs. Volker.
I'm sorry. We talked about these roads. Um, why would we be putting any roads in here? If we don't have a developer, if there's nobody developing parcel A and parcels, or parcel B and parcel C, why would you put any roads in the, in the PUD?
Well, a-again, this is a, that's okay. This is the preliminary site plan. So what we're showing you is the concept of how that development would occur. Uh, when you're doing the amended PUD, we're telling you what the uses would be in that parcel C, so we have those in there. But what we're also showing you is- But what we're also showing you is what intended access points are for that future development. We're not saying that that road is going to look exactly like that. Because what's going to end up happening is, is that once the amended PUD gets approved, those uses would now become permissible. They would go and sell the property. There would be a developer, just like this evening. They would come in and say, yeah, you know, I want to buy three acres of parcel C. I want to be down either by Lincoln Way or whatever, and that's where I'd like to put my development. And then as part of the final site plan approval, which we've been talking about this evening, that road would then go in place at that point.
Okay. So a follow-up question then to you is, you talked about um, in the, in the PUD saying that there would be no connection between um, a road between parcel B and parcel C, correct?
That is.
So are you proposing that there still be a connector road between parcel A and parcel C?
Yes. That would still happen. And that's what we're showing.
I, I, I see that. Okay.
No, that, that's what we're still saying would occur.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Ed? All right, any other questions or comments from the council? It appears to me that Mr. Davy has strategically moved closer to the podium, which leads me to believe that he has some information that he wants to share with us. So if there are no other questions or comments from the council, I'm going to invite Mr. Davy to come forward to see if I am correct in my assumption.
It's just, I want to ask if I can go home to my three and five-year-old. I, this might be more painful than putting them to bed, I'd say. Um, but I want to say I, this, my name Noah Davy with NAI Creasy, forty-one hundred, Edison Lakes Parkway, Suite three hundred, Mishawaka, Indiana. And, you know, as I joke about that, I, I realize what this means as far as time involved. And this has not been an easy process for everybody involved, including the neighbors. Um, and some of the faces, and actually I know first and last names of many of them by now, and I appreciate if I can look back. Uh, trust me, I know the emotion that goes into this stuff as well. Um, you know, I had a laundry list, a full page of notes, um, half of which is defending my character and some things that came up, uh, I think in the essence of time. Um, I'll stick with things that are going to try to move this thing forward as opposed to maybe potentially backwards. Um, I would say that uh, appreciate the questions that have come from, that's woman Volker.
Volker.
I'm sorry. Um, you know, uh, all along the way, and I, I've worked on behalf of the Lung Family Trust now for probably four or five years. Uh, we've had the land available. We've had a lot of different types of interests. Um, it's been available at around forty thousand an acre. We haven't had a single family residential developer materialize. Um, we've wanted to be good stewards in this process. We have a PUD which allows for five hundred plus units at fifteen units per acre, and I think thirty acres, something along those lines. Um, and, you know, we, along with collaborating with Ken Prince, brought us through a PUD amendment process with the spirit of bringing a PUD from the seventies to the modern era. Um, the PUD from the seventies existed, I think, uh, maybe twenty years uh, before the oldest resident, uh, or the longest living resident within the neighborhood across the street. Uh, it's been a sleepy cornfield that's had a PUD that was thoughtfully planned out in the seventies. And with that, multifamily was one of the main uses, uh, actually sketched along the Stula. Uh, the Lung Family, I know it's been stated that there hasn't been compromise in this process. I can assure you, um, you know, as Mr. Bell had stated, uh, I think it is exaggeration by saying twenty meetings, but there's been no doubt that there's been a lot of meetings and a lot of effort and time on behalf of the neighbors, um, as well as us personally and professionally that are getting paid to do this. Um, I would say for the Lung Family that's not here to, to, Dorothy Lung is my, my client. She's in her eighties. Um, I work through an attorney, Tom Walls, and a bank, Lake City Bank. And they're, they're looking out for their trust and trying to help Dorothy make sound decisions. So when it comes to making concessions, it's not something where I can call my client right away and get something done. So this has been a little bit of a slow process, and I just want to explain that because it's important. But I, I left the room earlier tonight, um, and I made a call to Tom Walls, who's the attorney that's been working with the family, uh, the Lung Family. Um, you know, the, the plan that, that we brought here today and, and that we sent at four-thirty today uh, was because I received a call on Monday pushing for, for something different than what we had submitted on Friday. So the reason it came at, at the four-thirty um, to Councilman Hazen, um, reached out to Pierchini as well. Um, reason that came was because it took uh, two days to really make any progress with the Lung Family because I had to write up four or five-page um, summary on, you know, really trying to further the neighborhood's um, interests. And um, in the process, I, I realized that, that people have said there's no compromise, but giving up five hundred and seventy-six units and dialing it back to one hundred and eighty-eight units, that's real value. Um, so uh, I think I'm going to steal one of John Pierchini's phrases. Um, he, I think he compared the process to polishing a fine piece of granite. And he said, you know, you need to keep on polishing, and finally you'll get there. Um, I appreciate the candor of the neighbors. My, my one piece of advice would be to get a functioning association um, as you move forward to allow you to be more nimble and protect your interests even further. Um, so in, in the spirit of, of polishing this granite and hopefully putting the rag down, um, I, when I called Tom Walls, I got authority to agree um, to the plan as Mr. Pierchini had delivered, um, which for the eighteen, seventeen and a half acres along the Stula, um, that I think that parcel B on our submission. Um, on Mr. Pierchini's plan, I, um, I can't remember the numbering or letter. One A, one A and one B. Um, I've, I've received um, confirmation that we're able to make that final concession um, and agree to commit to the uses as are shown on one A and one B on Mr. Pierchini's plan. Uh, the use is shown, I think it is in two A below. Um, we're, we're not agreeing to, it doesn't seem that the neighbors have been focused on that as much as that was thrown into the mix um, in an early version, which I think is what you're looking at. Um, we would, as a group, look to have the uses that are shown on our PUD amendment submitted Friday um, south of that one A and one B to remain as defined in our submission. Um, with uh, again, one A and one B being the uses shown on Mr. Pierchini's deliverable. Uh, I'm sure probably for the way I explained it, there's questions, but um, I, I hope um, on behalf of the, your neighbors, the Lungs, uh, that the neighbors that live across the street appreciate that not only has the developer made concessions in the way that they've laid out their L-shaped, now L-shaped apartment complex, lower the density under what's allowed. Um, I would hope that uh, it will be perceived and understood as a token of goodwill, that we went through this public process. Um, and additionally, that we're really working to meet the neighbors at the position that was delivered a couple of months ago and pretty much almost what, exactly what they delivered. So um, there's any questions I could field?
Great. I just want to be clear, so everyone's clear this time. What we're referring to is, I guess, the Pierchini plan for lack of a better description. One A would be the west part of the parcel that would not be sold. And that would include owner-occupied villas, villas and town.
And single, and single-family residential.
And then the one B or, that the east would be single-family.
Yeah, and they're, they're approximately the same acreage, uh, so collectively constituting around seventeen-plus acres. And the eastern portion would be single-family owner-occupied houses.
So what we're talking about doing is taking that seventeen acres. Right. Appreciate that. Appreciate that for today's night.
Other questions for Mr. Davy? Davy, before you sit down, Mr. Triple, did you have a chance to hear uh, the representations that Mr. Davy made for us and then Mr. Hazen's follow-up question?
Yeah.
Do you believe that, you know, the combination of the two constitutes enough of a record for us to be able to move forward um, with an approval? Because in fact, there was, you know, was a motion to amend the ordinance in front of us to reflect those comments, um, or do we need to make a different type of record? Yeah, I, I think I lost you a little bit in the translation behind the mask. So could you repeat, what would your recommendation to us be with regard to move uh, next steps?
So.
So, so if there was a motion and a second that was approved by the council to amend this ordinance to reflect the compromise that's been described to us, that it could be approved this evening, subject to the submission on the part of the petitioners of an appropriate written commitment that would reflect?
I do have one follow-up question to that. So one of the things that we talked about just a couple of minutes ago was this connector road. So I believe that that would be something that would be needed also in that written document, correct? Or in the ordinance? If that's important. If it's not important, then we can leave it out, but it seems like it was important.
We could make that part of the, the, the road to go out to see the road.
But no connection between B and C. That's really the one that I was referring to, is no connection between B and C. So I think that's what was important to the people in the neighborhood.
We would basically. One would spread the land, use all apartments. Lay that out, with the, the, the.
Correct.
Let, let me take a stab at restating this, so that we can um, make sure we're all on the same page. That subject to uh, the subsequent submission of a written commitment to reflect um, certain amendments to uh, the preliminary PUD, that um, proposed ordinance twenty twenty-four would be amended in two parts. The first would be uh, to consider parcel B as having been uh, as being treated in two equivalent um, subsets. The westernmost to be limited to um, single-family residences, um, owner occup-, uh, villas and townhomes. That would all be owner-occupied, occupied, I'm sorry. And then uh, what's been referred to as parcel one B would be limited to single-family homes. Then the second, the second subpart would be that um, there would not be any internal connection uh, between parcel C uh, that connected directly to the Stula, but rather there would continue to be internal connections with both Cedar Road and.
What we can do, if it's okay with. My purpose to, to you, to confirm that's.
You read my mind, Mr. Danch.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Mr. Compton?
Take what you just said and say that's my.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna entertain one. So Mr. Compton has made a motion.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Binicky. Any further discussion on the motion to amend proposed ordinance twenty dash twenty-four as was stated by Mr. Danch and restated by me? Mr. Compton?
Keep it short. I just want to thank the neighbors for being involved. And I know somebody said you're being a pain. You're not a pain. This is what makes Mishawaka great. Everyone compromised. And I think we got there. I'm, I'm happy with it. I really am. I know it took a lot of time and a lot of meetings, but it was worth it, I think.
Very much. Thank you, Mr. Compton. You all know what my feelings are on rental apartments in Mishawaka. Listening to the constituents here, they've come to an agreement that they will accept all the limitations. Mr. Compton, laid out by President Mr. Dixonbaugh. So I'm meaning that I'll go ahead and vote in favor of it, even though I don't like the idea condo or the apartment. I think it's just flooding the area, Mishawaka, way too fast. I think we need to consider family homes, if you're doing it now. And that, concentrate on building a community, not a transportation, stable community. So me voting against it, it's not going to do any good. You're the only one. So I'm going to oppose it with the constituents to agree to, and that will be me voting in favor of the, the portion of the eight floor. Thank you, Mr. Compton.
Compton?
I do want to thank the residents. Um, often what we do here is mundane. So having you here is a bit refreshing. Let's our council members get a feeling of what it's like maybe to be on the south end. St. Joe County Council regularly meets this late. This is, this is their regular schedule. Uh, it's not normally, but it is part of what we do and it's part of the process. Government and uh, what we're doing here isn't always pretty. But it's, it's getting things, compromises, working together to develop Mishawaka we all want. The only other comment, I know there was a lot of discussion here, traffic. It's county road. I think all that'll get worked out eventually. But I think a diverse community is a better. So having people um, living in an area that aren't all alike is good. And it helps us all in the future. Gives us a better understanding of what other people are doing. So I think having a neighborhood of diverse people and incomes and housing, as long as it's clean and well-kept, I think is good for a community. That's my personal. I understand your concerns about housing, uh, you know, the quality of your neighborhood and, you know, the housing prices and such. You want the, the value of your home not to be compromised and things like this, nor do I. I hope diversity doesn't bring you. So anyway, my two cents.
Just quickly, um, I wanted to, well, I also want to thank the neighbors. I know, um, obviously very important to have you involved, your concerns about your homes and, and your quality of life and the chose in the devotion that you have to, to, um, you know, this particular problem, but probably lots of different things, landscape, signage, traffic in your own community. Um, but I also wanted to uh, thank In Good Company for making a thirty-five million dollar investment in the city of Mishawaka. And I was just quickly looking through the website and your website just to see what some of the different properties look like. And I've looked before, and they all look like they're quite nice. But what I noticed is, um, and I don't know what year this was, but I noticed that In Good Company received the Indiana Apartment Association Management Company of the Year Award, top-rated status at nearly every community, and Green Certified New Communities. So it sounds to me like it's a quality, but In Good Company is a quality company that's making a solid investment in, and I hope you guys live up to this, but um, it sounds to me like you're a, um, a good, solid company, making a good, solid investment in Mishawaka. I know we all appreciate it. And I know you'll do a good job. It sounds like mom.
Thank you, Mrs. Volker. Volker?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to thank the residents who were here tonight. Uh, about thirty-eight years ago, I went uh, through something similar to this. Only I was out there in the audience involving a. there in the audience involving a Blair Hills community. But I think tonight, what we worked out here is a, is a win for, I think, one, the city of, of Mission Walker, as Mr. Perchini said, you know, this is a large investment, and we certainly appreciate that. Appreciate the fact that, you know, we'll be using local skilled labor on this project. So I think it's a, it's a shot in the arm for the local economy. And I think it's, it's a real insurance policy for the residents who were here tonight and that community there. Because I think that, you know, the apartments six hundred to seventy feet from, from the nearest residence, it's a long way. And I don't really think that that's going to impact property values at all. But I'm happy because I think it is a win for the city, it's a win for the residents, it's a win for our local economy.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other comments related to Mr. Compton's motion to amend proposed ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty? There are none, then. Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you to poll the council on this.
I'm not really sure what the amendment is.
The amendment?
When I look at the second page of the ordinance, it refers to a parcel A, a parcel B, and a parcel C. So I think maybe for clarification, I need to be told exactly what the amendment is for the record.
Again, this pertains to parcel B only.
Okay, so we're not changing parcel A?
We are, we are dealing only with parcel B. And the motion, as previously stated, pertains to parcel B in two subparts, subject to.
I have, I do have those.
Okay.
So, and C is not changing parcel B?
Thank you.
You're welcome. And with that, Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council on Mr. Compton's amendment?
Mrs. Demme?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton? Mrs. Bulker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The amendment passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Before we go further, we do have now the electronic comments of an individual who wasn't able to participate earlier. So I'm going to ask for everybody's indulgence while I read through these lengthy comments that have been submitted on, on behalf of a resident of the neighborhood. The comments indicate, and I quote, "My name is Sean Carlton. I live at six twenty-one Bayview Drive, Darn Apple and their updates." I agree with that. "They always break the last year's model. This was a big topic of conversation at dinner tonight. My, my in-laws live at five two zero one Breeze Wood. Our brother-in-law three doors down from that. My family owns three of the seventy-six homes in this neighborhood. I was reluctant to move here because of the apartments that back up to my property. And I do not have to say it has been an, do not, and I do have to say it has been an experience over the last year, with people discarding trash as they drive to their property, their apartments, excuse me. So I get to pick up their trash, often on the backside of my property since it's double frontage. We also have been bombarded with fireworks for the last nine months, all hours of day and night. People who live in the apartments do not care about the neighborhood. We have had fireworks at ten AM, four PM, ten PM, two AM. They are consistent. This is how, this is often preceded by squealing tires before or right after the boom, a boom that shakes the house, wakes my girls. Just a bonus of living by an apartment complex. As you can imagine, I am not in support of additional apartment complexes on the Stula. This also includes people stopping behind my property to finish a fall, a meal, or a fight on their way to their apartment." "I have never seen Dominic Ball park in front of my house to finish his Burger King and throw the trash out the window to get rid of the evidence on the way home to his wife, but the apartment goers do it all the time. I work in consumer and mortgage lending. This is huge demand for residential building. I'll put a record show that Mr. Ball left the room before he, uh, was mentioned. There's a huge demand for residential building of single-family homes. Numbers this year for homes are up despite COVID. As people want to own homes, council member who said we will not build Mission Walker was one hundred percent correct. If we rely on transient neighbors and rentals, I have many complaints about renters and reasons why we should not have more, but since I was not able to be connected through WebEx, I will keep it to just one more. The current apartments walk their dogs, do not clean up after them. They walk on the road between the apartment and our home to have disputes. And while that sounds far-fetched, two weeks ago, I had to walk to the street with my cell phone. I warned a couple that I was calling the police because it was getting violent behind my property. We really want more of this in our neighborhood, more ponds. My girls are future drivers. All we needed is another thing to drive into. If they take after their mother, that's not far-fetched. More geese, more mess, sounds like a wonderful addition to the neighborhood. I ask that the council consider only single-family on the Stula, as we are being sold part of a larger plan, which the builder has shown that they do not mind coming back and asking for additional changes last minute to sneak in what best suits their needs and not our fine neighborhood or city. I would be there today to voice my concerns, however, due to COVID concerns, and my father-in-law being a kinney recipient, we would minimize our trips, or there would be three additional houses, eight additional neighbors there tonight to support a better plan for the neighborhood. Last week, I drove by Autumn Lake Apartments and Edward Jones Apartment Complex, very nice property in Mission Walker, however, then drove through the property behind Family Video on the Stula. The two do not compare. How can we trust a developer that does not keep the property as nice as other apartment complexes to further develop more apartments? These apartments will have a negative effect on property value. Are future home builders wanting to build in the neighborhood and on future home builders wanting to build in the neighborhood and affect those who are here until they move and for those who stay for years to come?" So thank you to Mr. Carlton for his comments. So are there any questions or comments on the part of the council with regard to proposed ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty, yes, twenty twenty dash twenty-four as amended? I just want to add my brief thanks to the neighbors as well for your participation in this process, and also to the developer, their various representatives, for their willingness to listen to them and arrive at a compromise. But that old saying about a compromise allowing everybody to walk away a little bit unhappily, proving that it's a good compromise, I suspect that this will fit that bill. I, I want to echo the comments of, of my colleagues. As important to us as it should be, what's at the best interest of this neighborhood, we always have to balance it out with what's in the best neighborhood interest of the community as a whole. And certainly, to facilitate a thirty-five million dollar investment in the current economic climate, along with the construction jobs that will come along with that, is, is an important benefit for the community. But it certainly shouldn't come at the price of what's best for your neighborhood. And I believe that we've arrived at an outcome here that allows us to be able to meet both those needs. I also want to acknowledge the work that, not just the council as a whole, but Councilman Hazen has done on this. I appreciate working with him on this, and I think it's a better outcome for the time and the effort that everybody put into it. So I will be voting in favor of this ordinance as amended this evening. And again, thank you to everybody for their patience. Mr. Mamalenti?
Because I followed the rules and waited for the proper time to speak, everybody picked my comments, but I'm just joking. But anyway, I'd, I'd be remiss if I didn't say sincere thanks to the developers, especially to the neighbors. This is what city government is about or should be about, that you guys do have a voice, and you guys use your voice to, to speak your concerns with the council. And that was greatly appreciated. And to reiterate what Mr. Hicksonbaugh said, wise man once said, if I come away from a compromise or negotiation, both parties kicking the dirt, then it was a compromise. So I think we did that. Also want to take this time to thank the colleagues, and particularly Mr. Hazen and Mr. Hicksonbaugh for their work and efforts, and all the others that attended the meetings, doing a great job of communicating to the council, even the rest of the situation as they unfolded. So thanks to all. Be lucky that you're on central times and you gain an hour. Well done, and a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mamalenti. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Mrs. Demme?
I would like to thank the residents for making a little noise. I think that it's healthy, and I, I thank you for getting your voices heard and, and getting this done in a, in a great way. And I, I hope everyone is, is happy. So thanks again for making that noise and keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, then I will call for the questions.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Demme?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bulker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance as amended, passed at nine to zero.
Thank you. Are there any other new business to come? Well, we have no other unfinished business that I'm aware of, so is there any other new business to come before the council? Mr. Compton?
I want to take a moment to thank the council members that participated in the negotiations of lease contract, Tony, Matt, Greg, and there were others that were there. Mike is there as well. This is the exciting part, folks, come on. Just kidding. But I do want to, on the record, thank everyone. And, and also, I'm a little disappointed she's not here, to thank her in person, two people actually, our attorney, Matt Hinkle, and, and Becky Miller, our, our city controller were a big, big help. And Alex Arnt from the Police Department, Assistant Chief of the Police Department, were big, big helps in, in us getting this done. So that you know, a week from Thursday, week from Tuesday, next Tuesday, the tenth, thank you, Mike, we're meeting with the fire department. Now, we're not going to be able to use this room, so we're going to be upstairs in the conference room. So if you would like to come, just keep in mind that social distancing.
That invitation is to the council because it is an executive session, not to the public.
Right, it's just open to the, executive session.
Because you're, everybody's hearing you, so I don't want people.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forget about that. So it's an executive session to the council for all you people out there in Internet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Other new business? Oh, Mr. Mamalenti, sorry.
Just two parrot Mr. Compton's comments, and thanks to members of the negotiating team. Outstanding job as always. Special thanks to Becky Miller and the attorney, Assistant Chief that attended as well. Also want to take this time to mention that we will have our last Neighborhood Watch meeting for Twin Branch. Will be on November eighteenth. And when I say last, I meant of twenty twenty. We will reserve twenty twenty-one, I'm getting slapped after. But that will be at seven o'clock via Zoom, and we will, I'll let Mr. Hazen remind the public at our next meeting and unveil our guest speaker. That's what I'm saying.
Other new business? There are none, then a motion to adjourn would be in order. Your adjourn, thank you for this.
Okay, then.